Okay, everyone, welcome to our meeting tonight. Appreciate you all being here. If we could all please rise and we'll salute our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Bill De La Peña.
Present.
Councilmember Adam.
Here.
Councilmember McNamie.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones.
Here.
And Mayor Engler.
Here. Very good. We do not have any requests for continuances, so we'll go to our special presentation right off the bat here. Four years ago, as we were preparing for our election and the coming of the new council, little did we know that that next week would be a horrendous week for our city. Our city was faced with a fire that we all remember so well. But before the fire, we experienced a tragedy in our town. On November 7th, it'll be the fourth anniversary of one of the most tragic events in our city's history. There was a mass shooting at the borderline, at the Bar and Grill there. Tonight, the city council will be issuing a proclamation to celebrate the lives of those who were so sensibly taken and to recognize all the survivors and family members who were so horrifically impacted that night. We need to honor the first responders who arrived to help. And we need to acknowledge the strength of our city as we move in our hearts to remember this tragedy. I want to take just a minute, I want to, we have a proclamation, I'm going to read from the proclamation so everybody understands what we're talking about. "On the evening of Wednesday, November 7th, 2018, during college night, at the Borderline Bar and Grill in Thousand Oaks, 12 lives were tragically taken and the lives of 248 survivors were forever impacted by the enduring tragedy of this night. And on November 7th of this year marks four years since Shawn Alder, Cody Kaufman, Blake Dingman, Jacob Durham, Sergeant Ron Heelis, Elena Hoesley, Dan Marinick, Justin Meek, Mark Mesa, Christina Morissette, Telly Orfanos, and Nicole Sparks' lives were taken. We recognize all present during the tragedy at the borderline, including those whose lives were taken, the survivors, the first responders, and the public safety personnel who acted with urgency and compassion. Many bravely risked their own lives to protect those of others. We also recognize those who have worked tirelessly during the aftermath of this event to promote healing within our community. The people of Thousand Oaks have remained conscious and intentional in engaging in personal acts and community initiatives that promote kindness, understanding, vigilance, and awareness to help prevent terrible acts such as what occurred at the borderline from ever happening again in our hometown. These initiatives have built community resilience, which have helped promote social correctness and though through purposeful acts of service, we remember those who were taken and we honor those that survive, the first responders and all whose lives were irrevocably changed Any act of service, no matter how small, is a powerful statement of love and appreciation for your community and the powerful ways to connect with others who may need it as well. No one knows for certain that this senseless act could have been prevented, but our community has worked every day to diminish the prospect of it happening again. The community shares in grief and trauma for those affected and remains dedicated to continuing to build a stronger community in a presence of love, compassion, service, and unity. Therefore, I, Bob Engler, Mayor, Thousand Oaks, on behalf of the entire city council, do proclaim November 7th, 2022, as a day of service to honor the lives of victims taken and those involved at borderline. And encourage our community to join in remembering those taken, those that survived and those that responded, and each person impacted by the horrendous acts of that night. I ordered the city flags be flown at half-staff for the day of service as a sign to the community of our commitment to remembering and honoring the fateful events of that day. Please take a minute to remember those who were affected that night, and I urge all of you to do an act of service throughout the community so that we can honor those who were taken from us." Thank you all for remembering those that we've lost. I'll turn the meeting over briefly to Mr. Powers.
Thanks so much, Mayor Engler, and always tough to transition on such a somber note and something that we all, it's hard to believe it's been four years, I heard Councilmember Adam say. But we're here tonight at the beginning of this meeting to also acknowledge two members of the city's executive leadership team who, for this, this will be their last meeting with us before retirement. Deputy City Manager Gary Rogers and City Clerk Cindy Rodriguez are retiring later this month. Both are consummate professionals, they've been members of our team and trusted leaders for many years now. Gary, starting with us back in April of 2012 as Human Resources Director. He brought a wealth of experience here from Stentz and Arcadia and Los Catos, doing outside consulting work. In his current role as Deputy City Manager, he's been involved in some of the highest-profile projects that we've been working on, the Campus Master Plan, our land management system. And in fact, tonight, Capstone Project, our Hillcrest Affordable Housing Project, which he has quarterbacked all the way up to here. Really describe Gary as a rock, he's so adaptable, he's got a wide-ranging skillset, there's literally nothing I can't go to him, and he hasn't had some experience in, and I know the other executive colleagues feel the same way. Cindy joined us in March of 2016, she's had been City Clerk in Galita, Santa Barbara, Ventura, and came to us here in Thousand Oaks, and I am thankful every single day, as I know many of you on the dais probably are as well, and those that are working to run for local office, you've had experience working with Cindy, she's absolutely head and shoulders above anyone I've worked with in this role. She has an eye for talent within the organization, things well above and beyond the traditional roles of the city clerk function, she's involved in almost all of our major hiring panels, she's assembled an amazing team, as evidenced by our incoming city clerk, Laura McGuire, who she helped to mentor and bring forward, and Sandra Lagato and others on that team that she's helped to mentor, and does that out in the profession as well. She's got tremendous instincts, she's got such a depth of knowledge and experience, and the work she's done to innovate and bring our technology up to par is truly amazing. Both Gary and Cindy have been just stalwart leaders on our executive team, they're going to leave big gaps, it's definitely bittersweet for us, but I'm so thrilled for their next chapters for both of them, and I know they'll stay in touch with us. I just want to offer on behalf of the executive leadership team, and we'll have a number of other opportunities to celebrate them over the next couple of weeks, but I certainly wanted to do it publicly here tonight to thank them so much from the bottom of my heart and for all their contributions, and on behalf of our organization and our residents here in Thousand Oaks. Mr. Mayor, if you want to share anything.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, appreciate it. I can only echo the words that you've spoken so far, both of these executives are valuable parts of what makes Thousand Oaks, Thousand Oaks. Gary has been marshaling as one of our, his final night will have a very important item that he's going to marshal through, but that's just one of many, and we appreciate your leadership throughout these years. And Cindy, I think all of us here on the dais appreciate you keeping us out of trouble. When we make mistakes on the dais and forget we need to close a public hearing, or if we get something wrong in terms of how we should be operating, you gently direct us back onto the right path, and I appreciate everything you've done for all of us here, but myself especially. I'm going to open it up just to anybody on the dais who would like to say anything to our departing colleagues here. Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Cindy and Gary, I'll tell you, you've been here the whole time I've been here, and you both have been really great, and I'm not just saying that, from day one, you've always been eager to help and there and available to support us, and we need the support, believe me, so I want to thank So I want to thank you both. You're really emblematic of what a great team we have here in the city to keep this a great city that it really is. So good luck in your adventures in your next life. I'm sure it'll be kind of fun, and I wish you both the best. Thank you.
Mr. McNamee.
It's my turn. You know, I've been here off and on for quite a while, and I've always felt we were a family here at the city. I've seen it rise from a small place to a large place, but we've never lost that feeling of teamwork. We've never lost that feeling of one for all and all for one. I know that it's not always easy, that we have a lot of adversity sometimes as a city, the mayor spoke of the borderline and the fires, and we had a flood when I was hot the first time. So we've had a lot of adversity, but we've always stuck together, and I'm so proud to be part of this. Cindy and Gary, I just wish you all the best in the future. I don't know how many times you bailed me out, Cindy. So I hope that you've passed that talent on to Sarah, perhaps. Thank you.
Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. Cindy, you guided me through the election process, not once but twice, and it's not an easy process at that, between FPPC regulations and dealing with the county and all the other rules. Thank you for keeping me on track. And if ever I have a question, you've got the answer, and I do appreciate it. And I know that Laura has been by your side for many years here and has been guided by you. And Laura, I look forward to working with you in the future as well. So we've got a wonderful, wonderful adventure ahead of you, both of you. Cindy, wish you the best for the next phase, too. Gary, again, as I always say to our wonderful city attorney, the more I'm involved with city politics as well as city rules and regulations that come down from Sacramento and the feds, I appreciate your expertise all the more. Legal profession was not my calling, and after sitting in a law class there a couple weeks ago, watching what you guys do, I lasted five minutes and said, "I'm out of here." So I do appreciate your expertise and the guidance you bring to this council. And as I always say, the greatness of the city is not because of the people sitting up here on the dais, the council members. It's because of the people here in Thousand Oaks care about the city. More importantly, it's the city staff that bring forth the creative ideas and the solutions that keep our city the way it is. Cindy, Gary, you're the reasons why Thousand Oaks is such a jewel that everyone wants to move here, and I thank you very much for your efforts. Mayor?
Ms. Bill DePena.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. I would like to acknowledge Gary first, because Gary came in... Where are you? There you are. You came in at a critical time when we were going through a transition in leadership at the city, and you brought with you a calm and sort of steadfast presence that enabled us to go through this transition. And it was your calm, steady hand that guided us through the process, along with the city attorney, but also with the city clerk, Cindy. And Cindy was with, together with Tracy, during the toughest time in our city. You helped us get through the borderline shooting as well as the fire, doing something that most people wouldn't even think about. We had to declare an emergency session, and we were in an actual council session for several days without closing the council meeting because so many decisions were being made during the borderline shooting and the Woolsey Fire that we had to be able to make the decisions. And so it was Cindy and as well as the city attorney that kept us grounded, that made sure we were legally where we were supposed to be. And this takes very strong leadership. And so I really, really want to thank you for your service to the city in making the city of Thousand Oaks what it is today in your relatively short period of time that you've been here, when you think about it. And just really appreciate what you have done, and I wish you the best of luck, both of you, in your new endeavors. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Well, as I'm going to give them both a brief, just very brief opportunity to share anything on their way out here, but as Councilmember Bill DePena reminded me in one of her comments, you know, it was them along with the rest of the executive team on the borderline event that banded together to put together a vigil, to carry things through during the fire, to run an emergency operations center for multiple days. Gary and I were on the roof at 2:00 a.m. on the top of the Cavali Theater, trying to make a determination if we were going to have to evacuate our emergency operations center with the fire approaching in there and nearly getting blown off the top of it. But just, again, a true example of the types of leaders that they are. Gary, would you like to step up just briefly?
Well, foremost, I wish to thank the council. You know, you touched on a lot of themes. One of them was leadership, and this council and prior council have provided leadership that has helped make this community what it is today. I'd like to think you had some help in that with city staff in terms of execution, and it really starts with Drew and Tracy and Ingrid, but the entire executive team, and then it just flows down into the organization. And you've demonstrated a caring for the community, but I have to tell you, so does staff. And sometimes from the librarians to the accountants, to the street maintenance worker, to the theater workers, you know, virtually everybody in the organization, I have to tell you, they inspired me because they genuinely care about doing a good job. They genuinely care about the lives of people in the community, and they want to make this organization and the community better. And it's just been an amazing place to work, and I leave you with a great sense of gratitude and thanks. It's been amazing in a blink of an eye. It's been the fastest 35 years in the business that I ever imagined, and I'm a little surprised it's here, but I'm going to miss you all, but I'll be watching from afar, and I know you're in really great hands. So thanks so much.
Cindy?
I know we have business to get to quickly, so I will just echo all Gary's words and sentiments to all the staff here, mayor and council members. You've all been a pleasure to work with, and I do want to recognize the leadership team as well. Great, excellent leadership. And to all the city employees here at the city of Thousand Oaks, always strive to provide that excellent customer service, and I think it is definitely reflected in the city, throughout the city. I do want to thank my staff. We're a small department, but we're mighty, and they are always looking for ways to further our transparency efforts, which are reflected in the many ways that people can participate today that I never would have imagined, as well as the election process. Someone can literally pull papers electronically, and it's just the continuance of trying to further our customer service, both internal and external, for internal and external customers. My staff does go above and beyond, so I do appreciate them for that. I will say that I have... I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity to work for the city of Thousand Oaks. I've worked for many municipalities, both in Ventura, in Santa Barbara counties, and I feel very fortunate to have had the opportunity. And I will end with just thanking some mentors, very strong mentors that I had in my life. Barbara Cam, 42 years as a city clerk at the city of Ventura. Donna Grundy from the city of Santa Clarita in Lancaster. And lastly, city clerk emeritus Nancy Dillon, who have been very... I feel very grateful to all of those three women, very strong women. So thank you, and I will miss you all, but I will be nearby. So thank you.
If you guys could step down, we're going to take a quick photo with the council for your keepsake. Also, any members of the exact team, if you want to come up as well and just get in the picture.
Well, thank you all for bearing with us. A couple of important items there. We do have our consent calendar, Madam Clerk.
Public comment.
I'm sorry, public comments. You see why we need Cindy?
This is a time and place for public comments. All remarks should be addressed to the council as a whole. Speakers are requested to state their name and community of residence for the record. Two individuals have requested to speak, and pursuant to council standards, speakers are allowed three minutes.
Very good. We have two people in house. It looks like Scott Horn is here. Scott, followed by Mr. Rosenthal.
I've got a few photographs. Let me get this set up on the Elmo. Hello, Mayor, council members, city staff, and citizens of the Cano Valley. My name is Scott Horn. I live in the Cano Valley since 1971. I am a Newbury Park High School Panther alumni. I own a home and operate a small business in the Cano Valley. Eighteen months ago, I spoke before you about the general plan update and requested you not upzone the 36-acre parcel known as the Borchardt Wetland. Today, I am here to declare victory, victory for the Borchardt Wetlands. Here is the Borchardt Wetlands in February of 2017. As you can see, the Ventura freeway, and from the top of the grade that way. I spent months researching the history, the hydrology, and humanity of the Borchardt Wetlands. From the research and through a Public Records Act request, it is confirmed the Borchardt Wetlands exists. Contained in a Public Records Act release of the city info from 2016, the developer landowner tried to get the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service to remove the Borchardt Wetland from their national wetland inventory. USF&amp;W researched the site, concluded, yes, it was an emergent wetland, freshwater emergent wetland, and they would not remove it from their list. According to the USF&amp;W, there is a freshwater emergent wetland on the site. Here's the Borchardt Wetlands as seen on the USF&amp;W Wetlands mapper from June of 2018, more than a year after that last photograph. A Public Records Act from 2020 also showed the city is not going to list any potential development on the Borchardt Wetlands in its housing elements for the new general plan. In that letter from Michael Forbes of the city to the developer landowner, the city says the state Department of Housing and Community Development will carefully review our proposed inventory and will remove any sites that have conditions they believe would delay or constrain development of housing of the site. For that reason, we do not anticipate including your property, the Borchardt Wetlands, in the housing inventory. Yea, yea. Now that it is settled, the question is, how can we utilize the Borchardt Wetland immediately to combat the effects of the drought, to capture all that water? Here is the creek last winter during December run of the mill storm. That's where the water starts going under Borchard Road, under the 101 freeway, right there. My idea now is to save as much water as possible during the winter storms. Here is the creek at the Borchard Road last winter during a late December thing. We should divert as much rainwater to the wetlands, and we'll recharge groundwater and recharge the Akfor below. Keep the water. If we do that, the Borchard Wetland can be restored. The groundwater will be restored and the Akfor restored. I urge you to change the zoning at the Borchard Wetlands to update to be a non-developable piece of property.
Thank you, sir.
It's all about photos.
Thank you for the photos, by the way. Mr. Rosenthal.
Good evening, Mayor, council, and staff. My name is George Rosenthal, and I live in the Ventu Estates. I and all the residents of Senior Mobile Home Parks in Thousand Oaks wish to thank Claudia Bill de la Pena for setting up a GoFundMe to raise funds to try to pay for the rent increase for seniors unable who are hard-pressed to pay the 8.5% rent increase. Claudia then went a step further and partnered with Harbor House so that Harbor House case managers can work directly with residents. Also, thanks to all those who contributed to the GoFundMe page. Harbor House called me today and stated their phone lines are jammed with seniors looking for help. Claudia Bill de Pena was the only council member to come through for those in need relief. Everyone else offered lip service, refused to do anything, or was stopped by staff from assisting. Although many of the hard-hit seniors and the 1,000-plus senior mobile homeowners can be helped, there are still hundreds and hundreds of seniors who can pay the 8.5% increase but are still stressed dramatically by choosing to pay for medicine or food while they're paying for their rent, and they may not make it in the months to come or with another 8% to 10% cap increase in '23. There has to be a cap put in place to prevent future catastrophes because every year increase is a permanent increase. Thousand Oaks City Ordinance 525 that the finance director shall or must set the CPI yearly. What does that mean? Well, every March of every year, the finance director walks into their office, opens their computer, and checks on the computer what the CPI is in March of that year. So this year, in March, it showed a CPI of 8.5%. Right then, the finance director by law should have said, "Oh, I must determine the correct CPI that will not cause a hardship on Thousand Oaks residents. Therefore, by law, I determine that it is too high, and I am going to choose one of the many lower options." By doing that, the finance director is obeying another city ordinance, 525, which states it is the duty of the council to protect mobile home park residents from excessive rent increases. The finance director would have then followed two statutes of the city law to protect Thousand Oaks seniors. Now, wouldn't that have been easy? You should follow the law. You can still follow the law. Amend what should have been followed in the first place to prove that you're following the law you wrote. It's the Thousand Oaks city law. It's the law. It's the law. Understand it and remove it.
Thank you, sir. City manager doesn't have any updates on our public comments, so let's then go to our consent calendar. Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry. Go ahead.
I wasn't sure whether Mr. Powers would say something. I just wanted the seniors here tonight, I wanted you to know that... I wanted you to know that, yes, I did set up a GoFundMe page, but my colleague Al Adam is the one who's been picking up the phone, making phone calls, seeking donations. So I just wanted you to know, and we've had donations from city employees as well.
Thank you, Ms. Bill de la Peña. Okay, Madam Clerk.
Mayor, we do have one public speaker for the consent, so I recommend that we take the public speaker first.
Very good, we do have one speaker on our consent calendar today. She's on Zoom, it's Kat Selm. Kat, can you go ahead?
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. On behalf of the Caneo Climate Coalition, I'd like to share how thrilled we are with the city's application to Cal OES for BRIC funds as described in the staff report for Consent Calendar Agenda Item H. The installation of battery microgrids at water pump stations, home hardening at low-income residences, fuel reductions through invasive species removal, the creation of an ember buffer zone along the 101 freeway, and the planting of live oaks in some fuel treatment areas to function as ember barriers are all great actions to take for wildfire resiliency that makes sense for Southern California. Too often, we see misguided wildfire resiliency projects in Southern California, those that don't seem to grasp that our fires are mostly wind-driven, with ignition sources clustered around urban areas and highways, and projects that also don't recognize that our chaparral are not fire-adapted and aren't just overgrown with fuels due to past fire suppression. The folks who worked on this application seem to really understand that ignition reductions, invasive species removal, and home hardening, and adapting our critical systems are great ways to approach wildfire resiliency, and we wish you success in your application. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Selm. Very good, I'll entertain a motion to pass our consent calendar.
Move the consent calendar.
Any items to be pulled? Very good, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes. Do you have any readings to do, Madam Clerk?
I do, thanks for the reminder. Touche. I have two long readings. An ordinance amending the Thousand Oaks Boulevard specific plan SB 20 and the Thousand Oaks Municipal Code by adding Section 9-4.2528 and Article 25 to Title IX, Chapter IV, amending Section 9-4.202 and Article II to Title IX, Chapter IV, amending Sections 9-4.2105 and 9-4.2106 and Article 21 to Title IX, Chapter IV, and amending Section 9-4.2402 and Article 24 to Title IX, Chapter IV, to modify existing standards and establish new development and zoning standards related to self-storage, mini-storage, and similar uses in certain zones, MCA 2022-70571, and SPA 2022-70799, Ordinance Number 1706-NS, and an ordinance to repeal Sections 8-1.01 through 8-1.24 and Chapters 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, and 16, and 17 of Title VIII, and to re-adopt Sections 8-1.01 through 8-1.24 and Chapters 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 14, 16, and 17 to Title VIII of the Municipal Code by adopting by reference Title 24, 2022 California Code of Regulations, including the California Administrative Code, California Building Code, California Residential Code, California Existing Building Code, California Historical Building Code, California Mechanical Code, California Plumbing Code, California Electrical Code, California Energy Code, California Green Building Standards Code, California Reference Standards Code, and 2021 International Property Maintenance Code, and adding Section 8-1.27 relating to emergency housing and Chapter IV to Title VIII relating to code administration, MCA 2022-70456, and that's Ordinance Number 1707-NS.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our public hearings now. Madam Clerk, would you like to open the hearing?
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8A, Triannual Public Health Goal Water Quality Report. And Mayor, at this time, we do not have any speakers.
Thank you, we do have a presentation tonight by Paul Jorgensen, and then also John Minkel, and we also have up there Cliff Finley for any questions. So please go ahead, Paul.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am Paul Jorgensen, the Water Quality Supervisor in the Public Works Department. I am presenting on the 2022 Triannual Public Health Goals Report, which is related to drinking water quality. Public Health Goal Report Overview. This is a state requirement established in 1996.
Quick, quick thing, can you pull the mic a little closer to you? That mic is not as sensitive as some of the others.
Like this way? Is that better? Sorry, Public Health Goal Report Overview. This is a state requirement established in 1996 and is unique to California. This regulation requires all water systems with over 10,000 service connections to complete the report and hold a public hearing every three years. To complete the report, city staff must analyze the annual water quality reports that the city provides to its customers, and report on any constituents that were detected above the public health goal standards. So what are public health goals? They are water quality standards developed by the state or EPA, but they are non-enforceable standards. Rather, they are goals, and no violations are issued if they are exceeded. These goals establish health thresholds for contaminants in drinking water while factoring in consuming water over a lifetime. Many of these goals are set at zero or near zero. When these goals are developed, health risks are considered, but not treatment availability, cost, benefits, or analytical capabilities. It is also important to define what maximum contaminant levels are. They are the enforceable standards that all water systems must meet. If these standards are not met, then violations are issued and public notification is required. When these standards are developed, health risks are considered, but unlike public health goals, other important elements are considered such as treatment availability, cost, benefits, and analytical methods. Drinking water meeting these standards is safe to drink and is affordable for all uses. As you are aware, the city purchases all of its water from the Cuyahoga Municipal Water District, and they purchase their water from the Metropolitan Water District. Most of the data used in this report comes from these water districts since they do extensive testing after their treatment process. The remainder of the data comes from the city's testing process. After reviewing the last three years of data, the city consistently met and exceeded all enforceable standards, but seven constituents out of 94 were detected above the public health goals. This table, in the first column, shows the constituents detected above the public health goals. The middle column of numbers that is titled Range of City Water Levels shows the range these constituents were detected at in our system. ND stands for non-detect, and you can see that there were many times when these constituents were not detected. The column to the left of the city range column shows the enforceable standards, and you can see that our water easily met those standards. The column to the right of the city range column shows the public health goal standards. Those goals are set at zero or close to zero. The last column shows the sources of these constituents and how they get into the water system. Arsenic, gross alpha, gross beta, and uranium are from erosion of natural mineral deposits as water travels through the soil. Bromine is a byproduct of the ozone disinfection process at Cuyahoga and Metropolitan Water Districts. Lead is from the water customers' plumbing. The city tests about 40 homes every three years for lead. Lead is not detected in the city's water supply. Total coliform bacteria is an indicator bacteria and is everywhere in the environment. The city had one sample test positive for total coliform out of 780 samples in 2020. All re-samples were negative for total coliform. The city takes 15 samples every week in the water system for this indicator bacteria. Report conclusions are that all enforceable drinking water standards were met consistently, and that no further action is required. That concludes my presentation, and the recommendations are in the staff report. I would be happy to take any questions you may have. Thank you.
Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, Mayor. What is the minimum contaminant level that's acceptable for lead? The maximum contaminant level? Yep. So that's the enforceable standard, and for lead, it's 15 parts per billion. So we're at 2.3, correct? 2.3, that's the 90th percentile, so that's the 90th, out of 90%, the samples are 2.3 or below 2.3, the way that is calculated. Any idea where that's coming from? Is it the leaching of the connections in the pipes? Yeah, so the lead is basically done at the customer's home that we do every three years, and we do it under worst-case scenario where the water sits in the pipes for at least six hours before we take that sample. So that is seeing if the water is corrosive, that it would be leaching that lead from the pipes into the water. Is there pH or anything else that you can think is leaching the lead out of the pipes at that point? Yeah, if you did have lower pH, if the water was corrosive, it would have that lower pH that would cause that leaching. Right, and what's causing it to give us the 2.3 at this point? What is the cause of that? The homes that we test are supposed to be from when they were built before like the lead solder band. So again, this is all worst-case scenario, so these are homes that are maybe older that would have possible lead piping or lead solder and stuff like that. Anything that you're able to do from your end to help minimize the effect, whether it be increasing certain minerals in the water to help reduce the leaching, changing pH? No, and again, we are very below the enforceable standards, and we are at this three-year interval because we do have very low levels. If we had higher levels, we'd be on a one-year interval for doing this. And plus, we don't have any treatment facilities, so any treatment would have to be done at the Jensen Plant or Cuyahoga's treatment plant. So just to reiterate that, again, this is where the water's been sitting for six hours before you take the sample in the morning? Yeah, it's first straw. And you do the analysis there to see what lead is in the water. And yes, we do have presence of lead in our water at the tap, not due to Cuyahoga's treatment, but it's one where just these houses were built with lead in the systems and the pipes for the connections, and that's leaching out, and nothing we can really do for it with the water quality coming through, correct? Correct, and again, it's at very low levels that we're seeing that. Okay. Thank you. You're welcome. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, just, anybody else have any questions? Just for comparison's sake, I know it's been in the news quite a bit over the last few years with Flint and the other places. Can you give an example of what types of readings they're having in Flint have a feel for that?
I'm not sure exactly. I know they were well above these enforceable standards, the MCL, so I do not know what the exact numbers that they were getting from those homes that caused that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, no other questions, it's a receive and file, so... I need a motion to receive and file, yes.
All right, thanks, Mayor. Well, anyway, it's nice to see that our water meets all state and federal requirements, and as we probably already know, there's a few unfortunate cities around the nation that are having drinking water problems, but this is tap water right here in my renewable bottle. So it's good to drink. Anyway, I will move the staff.
Mayor, if you could please close the public hearing?
Oh, yeah, we gotta do that.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will close the public hearing, and I'm told by our clerk we do not need a motion to receive and file.
Okay. I'm not needed.
Very good.
Great feeling.
Mr. Finley?
Exceeding 100 parts per billion for Flint, Michigan.
So it's 100, and we're at 2.5?
Six times the national standard.
So we're at 2.5 at these older homes?
2.3 is the highest.
2.3.
Very highest.
Thank you.
Tracy, for clarification, shall we have a... Okay. Yes.
We do need a motion?
Very good, we do need a motion by our city attorney.
Then I will move 8A on the Triennial Public Health Goal Water Quality Report.
Very good, Madam Clerk, please call it.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones?
Aye.
And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
We do have a second public hearing. Madam Clerk.
Hearing advertised as required by law is open to consider Agenda Item 8B, the Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act, hearing for the benefit of Momentum Agencies. And Mayor, at this time, we do not have any public speakers.
Very good, we do have our Finance Director Jamie Bascarino. Please go ahead, Jamie.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. Good evening, Mayor Engler, council members. Tonight, we are holding a Tax Equity and Fiscal Responsibility Act public hearing, also known as TEFRA, for California Enterprise Development Authority and Momentum Agencies. The last TEFRA hearing held by the city was June 9, 2020, on behalf of the Authority and Hillcrest Christian Center of Thousand Oaks. The California Enterprise Development Authority, and I'll just refer to them as Authority from here on out, is a JPA created to assist local governments and nonprofits with economic development and the issuance of tax-exempt debt that provides a public benefit and serves the needs of the residents within its jurisdictions. The city is one of over 250 agencies and county, member cities and counties of the JPA. Momentum Agencies is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit organization which assists adults and children with disabilities and medical conditions. Momentum Agencies is relocating to the city of Thousand Oaks, and the debt will assist with the acquisition and improvement of facilities at 240 Willow Lane. In order to finance the acquisition of and improvements to the facilities of Momentum's new location in the city, the Authority will issue tax-exempt revenue bonds in an amount not to exceed 20 million, and loan the proceeds to Momentum Agencies. Per the requirements of the TEFRA, in order for the interest on a bond issue or loan to qualify as tax-exempt, a public hearing held by an elected board of a governmental unit is required, and the governmental unit must approve the issuance of the debt. Since the Authority's board is not an elected body, and the Authority is not a governmental unit located in the area in which the project is located, the Authority and Momentum Agencies have requested that the city hold the hearing, as the city council is an elected body, and the project location is within the city's jurisdiction. The city is only responsible to hold the TEFRA public hearing and approve the Authority's issuance of the debt by resolution. None of the actions taken by council tonight obligates the city to provide any financing, nor does it obligate the city to make any debt payments. The debt will be the sole responsibility of Momentum Agencies and the Authority. Representatives are available if you have any questions. Amy Simmons, the Chief Operating Officer for Momentum Agencies, is attending in person, and Sam Bowsey, Bond Counsel at Cutac Rock, is available through Zoom. Staff recommends that city council conduct the public hearing, and after the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the issuance of the debt. And we're available for any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Bascarino. Questions from my colleagues? Just to underscore, this is money coming from the Authority, not our bond and debt in itself.
Yep, this has nothing to do with any city funding.
Very good. Okay. We can, any comments from the public? I don't have anything. And then, we can close the public hearing? And then, Mr. Adam?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, a TEFRA hearing enables this bond to be issued tax-free, which means a lower financing level for the entity, so... But as you say, there's no obligation with the city whatsoever. So with that in mind, I will move 8B, the TEFRA hearing for the benefit of Momentum Agencies.
Any comments? Very good, Madam Clerk.
Councilmember Bill de la Peña?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Jones? And Mayor Engler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 5-0.
Very good, as we change the guard. Very good. As we change the guard on our dais over there. We do have another series of department reports. Very good. We do now Mr. Gary Rogers, leading this discussion, having to do with our Hillcrest site, affordable housing development. Go ahead, Mr. Rogers.
Mayor Engler. Mayor Engler, members of the city council for the last time. Tonight, we're presenting a recommendation regarding the selection of an affordable housing team to construct affordable housing at the Hillcrest site. I'm going to share some key milestones over the past 18 months. The key criteria that was part of the requests for proposal used to evaluate the proposals and the development teams that responded to the RFP. Going to share the results of the RFP. And then the city's consultant, RSG, is going to present the positive attributes and the findings associated with the due diligence of the development team. Lastly, representatives from the development team are here tonight to tell you a little bit about their project. So we've been very methodically over the past 18 months moving this project forward. Starting back in May of 2021, the council authorized negotiation to purchase the Hillcrest site. We moved quickly through the purchase and sale agreement. escrow was closed and we took possession of the property on November 10. We retained RSG, an affordable housing consultant, to help us through the various details associated with a project of this nature. And we also met with the council to confirm the site objectives in April of this year. In May of this year, the council adopted a resolution declaring the site exempt surplus land pursuant to the Surplus Lands Act. And then in June of 2022, we issued the RFP for the Hillcrest Affordable Housing. The deadline for that was August 15. We did provide some site visits for interested parties and provided a period of time in which the consultants could ask us questions. I'm sorry, the development teams could ask questions and we would respond. Ultimately, the responses were... four responses were received. Interviews were conducted in September. And the due diligence continued through October. Just to reaffirm a little bit about the site, it's a little less than four acres. It's zoned R3 multifamily residential for residential development. And there is an existing 26,000-square-foot structure that is going to be demolished as part of the project. In the RFP criteria, we were looking for a development entity and team that has extensive experience and expertise in affordable housing and in designing and constructing high-quality developments. We were hoping to have someone that with a vision and a design for market feasible housing that implements the city vision for the community and promotes the character of the city. Economic vitality and financial strength of the proposed development, including markability and feasibility, were also part of the criteria. Perhaps most importantly, having financial and organizational capacity of the development team to successfully complete the project in a timely manner, including the ability to secure the financing needed and leverage other sources, if needed, to build the highest quality development. Lastly, pursuant to council direction, we were seeking to ensure a development that maximized the number of for-sale units. Based on that criteria, four development teams submitted responses. Actually, one of those teams was not responsive to the RFP. But the other three development teams were evaluated by an interview committee. And we ultimately selected People Self-Help Housing and their partners to move forward in the project. The interview team was made up of city staff, representatives from the city manager's office, the city attorney's office, community development. We had our RSG consultant as well as an attorney, a land use attorney from an outside legal firm, KBB. They all unanimously agreed that People Self-Help Housing presented the most viable proposal and the one that most closely matched the criteria that we had established in the RFP. Also in September, we presented information to the Finance Audit Committee regarding the proposals and they concurred with the recommendation of both the interview panel and the representatives that were on that panel. With us tonight via Zoom is Tara Matthews from RSG, and she's going to provide a brief overview of the due diligence that their firm prepared and share some of the findings of the interviews as well.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. So as Gary was mentioning, the interview panel and team has selected to move forward with People Self-Help Housing. So People Self-Help Housing is proposing to develop 78 ownership units that will house up to 256 individuals. Of all of the proposals received, it would create the most amount of ownership units and the maximum amount of individuals that would be housed. As part of our process, we examined each developer's capacity to undertake the project and found that People Self-Help Housing was the most qualified to execute a for-sale product. And they also have experience that includes services that from construction and development of project all the way through qualifying eligible households and helping eligible households obtain loans and go through that process to actually move into the units. As you know, affordable housing is a little bit different than market rate housing. And so the qualification and eligibility process is different. And so they have experience in helping qualified households through that process. Of the 78 units that are proposed, 59 of them are low income. So those would be available to those households that are making roughly between $51,000 to $81,000 and would sell for approximately $250,000 to $350,000, depending on the bedroom size. And the remaining would be 19 moderate-income units, which are available to households making approximately between $81,000 to $107,000 and would be sold for somewhere between $470,000 to $570,000, again, depending on the number of bedrooms. So the units proposed would be able to house teachers, firefighters, social workers, human resource specialists, some of the members of your community that may have those types of jobs with related incomes. Another thing that we found is that they fulfilled all the requirements of the Surplus Land Act. The Surplus Land Act is a requirement that the city, as you guys mentioned, did the resolution, making it exempt from surplus land, even though it's exempt from surplus land. It also comes with additional rules where 100% of the units had to be made available to moderate-income households below, which 75% of those at least restricted to the low-income level. And they also needed to have 45-year affordability covenants. So in our review, we found that the developer understood those requirements well and understood the process and could ensure that the Surplus Land Act requirements are being met. Another aspect of the project that we heard from council when we came before you all in April was the idea of potentially having it be affordable in perpetuity and some questions related to a community land trust. People Self-Help Housing proposal, they are proposing to partner with the Ventura Land Trust, which basically would keep the units affordable in perpetuity. The way that works is that with the homeowners, they're ground leasing the units. And then there's also affordability covenants put on to those units as well. But the land itself will be with the housing trust to be... or excuse me, the land trust to be used over and over for affordable housing purposes. We also examined in depth not just People Self-Help Housing, but all of the development proposal, financial information to ensure that the projects proposed were feasible, that the assumptions made sense, that they had adequate contingencies for changes potentially in the market. And we found that People Self-Help Housing had a really strong understanding of the legally required sales price calculations. The sales price calculations are linked to the income limits and the bedroom sizes, and we have to follow health and safety code limits for Ventura County. And they understood that, their calculations made sense. They have adequate and accurate assumptions in there for things such as insurance and HOA fees and other things like that. We also took a look at the overall cost to develop the units and their development costs were within reason and range. And you could tell that they just had a deep understanding of how to build this particular product type and also how to sell this particular product type. They also have lots of experience with various financing sources that are needed to bring the project to fruition, one of them such as Cal Home and their development proposal and other state funding sources as well. So again, as things potentially may shift in the market, developer always has to kind of be ready for those changes in case additional financing is ever needed. We also noted during the interview process and from their submitted proposal that the team assembled has a lot of experience building this particular product type. And the team also has quite a bit of experience working together. The development team itself, People Self-Help Housing, has 52 years of experience and has developed over 1,200 single-family homes. And the team, Gary had a slide previously that listed all of the team members. They all have about 20 years of experience working together. So it was the interview panel, you know, we appreciated that and their ability to work together to ensure that the project is built. One of the things that we also really appreciated in their development proposal was that they have experienced qualifying households and also monitoring households. So there's a monitoring requirement where the city will need to, you know, ensure that those units remain affordable and that they're... can be counted moving forward. And so People Self-Help Housing and their team has a lot of experience on both qualifying households as well as following through with the monitoring requirements to ensure that those units are being used for the purposes intended. The development team also demonstrated the capacity to complete the project in a timely manner. They're anticipating, you know, from when the DDA, the Development and Disposition Agreement is executed, that it would take approximately four years to complete. They did mention that that could be less, a lot of it depends on city approval process and timing. And the community outreach and engagement process, you know, they went into length during the interview process about engaging with the community early, making sure the community knows who they are, can reach out to them to talk about, you know, things that they would like to see, things they would not like to see and kind of be involved in the design of the project. They also, in their development proposal, put a lot of consideration into how to design the property. They took elevations into consideration, the single-family homes that were nearby, to try to be considerate of the neighbors nearby with their project design. They also included environmental features. You know, they had mentioned it's in a wildfire area and some of those design features and whatnot to help protect those units. So overall, we were, you know, impressed with People Self-Help's housing proposal and thought that they did a good job of meeting the RFQ requirements, taking note of the preferences in there put by council that you had all discussed back in April and overall demonstrated the capacity and the experience to execute the project.
Thank you, Tara. Now I'd like to turn it over to Kenneth. He can pronounce his last name for me and.
Trigero. Yeah, thanks, Gary, yeah. Thanks, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. We are really excited to be here and it's a real significant opportunity for us and it sounds like for you. I got to say, I think we've worked in 35 to 40 jurisdictions roughly along the central coast. I think you're a standout leader, especially in investing in workforce homeownership. So we are really excited to be a part of this. We've got a couple slides. Oh, I see it's popping up. And Gary, are you going to move those for me or somebody? We can go to the next one here, or do I? Okay. Oh, boy. Okay. I'm going to see if I can figure this out. Is this a test? This is going to be a test.
I can also move it for you if you'd like.
Pressing the button.
Gary, why don't you just advance them for him?
Okay.
Sorry, Gary. Didn't mean to let you down right off the bat here. Okay, so we've got our mission statement right there. And just so it's clear, we're a 501(c)(3) private nonprofit. And in some of the comments, the term, we were founded in 1970. So we've got over 50 years' experience. And that started out in San Luis Obispo County. Just a couple of local volunteers who were concerned with their neighbors, the community there, wanted to do something about that. And a couple of them were part of the faith community. One was Dave Richardson. He was part of the United Methodist Church, spent a lot of time here. We just talked to him last week. He was so surprised to see how this little group formed into what is now over 210 employees and doing quite a bit since that day. But we're still keeping that same model, if you will, and staying true to our roots. Like I say, we started in San Luis Obispo County, then we worked in Santa Barbara County, moved into Ventura County as well, and most recently, we've been working in Monterey County. So now we've got a portfolio. You can see the statistics, there are roughly over 3,000 homes that we've developed. Again, right on the central coast, about a third of those in homeownership. That means that we're serving quite a few people who I think you're interested in serving. Frontline essential workers. I know some of the positions were mentioned. Those are very typical of who we're serving. There's over, I think, 2,000 different employers who our residents are working for them. A lot of those are small businesses. And so we feel like that's a really important component of what's going on in our communities. We know there's such a great need. Of course, we're serving about 10,000 residents there. But we've got these huge waiting lists. There's over 12,000 on our waitlist just for the rental housing, let alone homeownership, though there's just so few and far between homeownership opportunities that, again, we're really excited to have an opportunity to work with you potentially here. So let's see. Yeah, the next slide. Thank you. You anticipated that. That's good. We really, like I say, started out in homeownership, though. And we've got self-help in the name because that was originally a program that we started with, helping families build their own homes. And that was a program that we started out. We still do that today. And we've got several projects planned, about six in different communities. You can see, those are just homeownership areas. And in Ventura County specifically, I mentioned, we've started, you know, 30 years ago. So we've done some homeownership in Peru and in Moore Park where we're in construction. So we've done some homeownership in Peru and in Moore Park, where we're in construction on some apartments right now in Santa Paula. We're about to break ground in Oxnard and on some apartments, and we've got Project C in Ventura already, we're working on another one in Ventura and in Fillmore as well. So we're really getting more and more active because, of course, there's this crisis and we're getting more and more calls. So as I said, we're still committed to, let's see, yeah, sorry, I can't quite see. No, you're good, you're good. Maybe just switch to, to the next slide? Yeah, so I see it. Back one, Gary, right there, thank you. So I just wanted to say that we're staying with this model that traditionally we've done, community-based nonprofit. What that means is, you know, we live here, we work here, we're part of the community, and we're gonna be here after the project is done. So that, I think, is, you know, the best model, I'm biased, of course, but I think that has really meant too, that we're always trying to fit in and be responsive to the community and understanding what is the character and the need and the desires. And if you go around and look at our properties, you will not recognize, oh, and say, oh, that's what People's Self-Help Housing, because it's always different, it's always like, hopefully fitting in, again, to the character of the community. We're fully integrated is our model, so we've got staff that do everything in-house. So we own, we develop, we're a builder, we're a general contractor, a property manager, we provide services as well, and we're, we're committed to, you know, helping people not only just move in and live in the sticks and bricks, as they say, but we're presenting opportunities and resources to make sure it's a total success for them to either rent or, or own. And then the last point there, just to mention, yeah, we do feel like we are strong financially, and that's important in this, in this business. We have a fairly conservative approach, we are pretty strong in our liquidity position. It takes a lot of working capital, especially at the pre-development level, so we know what that takes in order to commit and deliver on, on, on a project like this. So we wanna run through, it's not just us, though, at Peoples', and we've got a, a team of folks, we wanna kinda talk through a few of those, but next I wanna bring up our team lead with Peoples', and that's Veronica Garcia, and she's our Chief Real Estate Development Officer, and she can take it over. Wanna come up?
Thank you again, Mayor, Council, and staff. Again, it's an honor to be here before you today. Thank you very much to staff and the team for your recommendation. Touching on our, our proposal, so getting a little bit into the specifics about our proposal and the team that we pulled together, we really think this is an incredibly special and unique opportunity to create homeownership opportunities in Ventura County. People's Self-Help Housing, we're involved in, we're developing over 300 units of affordable apartments throughout Ventura County, but on the homeownership side, we had not identified, we were looking for a project, a homeownership development opportunity in the county, and this really fit that for us. So we wanted to really pull together a special collaboration with trusted local partners who bring expertise to each element and each phase of the development cycle to honor our commitment to this project, to see it through to completion and to ensure its success. So I'll be introducing each team member briefly, just so that they can introduce themselves to you and touch on their role in the project. Starting with People's Self-Help Housing, of course, development team, I oversee the development team, development and construction teams, and Cheryl Flores, who you'll meet in a couple of minutes, is our VP of Homeownership Development. She brings over 26 years of experience focused in, focused on affordable homeownership development, and we, we owe much of our success in homeownership to Cheryl. Next, we have the Linda Bronchiger of the Housing Trust Fund, Ventura County. Linda, would you come up and introduce yourself?
Good evening, City Manager, Mayor, City Council staff, thank you for having us here this evening. I'm Linda Bronchiger, I'm the CEO for the Regional Housing Trust Fund, Ventura County, and it's supporting Housing Land Trust, Ventura County. I just wanna say for the record, Ventura Land Trust, I think, was referenced by RSG, that is a conservation land trust, that's not us, we are the Housing Land Trust, Ventura County. But the Housing Trust Fund was incorporated in 2008, and we began lending in 2013. We've raised funds from all 10 cities, the county, federal, state, corporate, foundation, and individual resources. To date, our revolving loan fund has funded short-term loans totaling over $26 million. That goes to nonprofit and for-profit developers, and we've produced a little, 1,166 units to date. We value our long-term partnership with the city of Thousand Oaks. They were an early investor into the trust fund, and we really appreciate that because it helped us leverage those funds and cycle them in and out many times to produce affordable housing throughout Ventura County. In 2021, the Housing Trust Fund incorporated this Housing Land Trust, Ventura County, as a supporting nonprofit, to receive donated land that is restricted long-term for affordable housing. Our first piece of land was donated by the city of Oxnard, which is now going to be the Homeless Solutions Center, which has, will have 110 beds and 55 affordable transitional apartments. If the city chooses to donate the Hillcrest land, the Housing Trust Fund slash Land Trust will be able to leverage millions of dollars in diverse funding from the state as well as the federal government to produce more affordable housing here as well as the rest of the county. These resources will also be helped to fund this project. The Housing Trust Fund and the Land Trust, we bring a stellar team from our Board of Directors of very seasoned housing professionals, including one of your staff, Lynn Oshida. We have a very significant track record of leveraging lending capital for the financing of affordable housing. We have years of experience working with People's Self-Help and this entire development team tonight, and we have a very proven track record of making sustainable, excuse me, a track record of making a sustainable impact here in Ventura County with regards to affordable housing. So I thank you for this opportunity to be part of this very exciting project and to do some work in Thousand Oaks.
Thank you, Linda. Next, we'd like to introduce Ventura County Community Development Corporation, who will also play a pivotal role in this development, Alex Vega.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members, staff, great to be with you. My name is Alex Vega, and I'm with the Ventura County Community Development Corporation. Ventura County Community Development Corporation was established in 2001 as a CDFI, Community Development Financial Institution with the U.S. Department of the Treasury. We're a private nonprofit, and our goal is to focus on homeownership, creating homeowners. We assist low and moderate income homebuyers. As a CDFI, we have a lot of different funding sources that we have available at our organization, Cal Home, wish funds, partnered with a lot of municipalities over the years, currently Ventura County, and providing down payment assistance through their programs, all again with the purpose of trying to create homeownership. We've worked with all municipalities, the last project that we worked with the city of Thousand Oaks was the Park Lane and finding two units, two, two household members there. And we focus and specialize in the eligibility process, the different layers and complexities of who is eligible, determining what that, that criteria is, and it's all very unique depending on the city and, and the project itself, as well as finding the qualification. So as a CDFI, as a nonprofit organization, we're also a HUD-certified counseling agency, so counseling and education is really the foundation, the, the strength of preparing families for homeownership, but more than preparing them is, especially through projects that will take multiple years to complete, is to continue to hold their hands through that process to ensure that they're both qualified and eligible now, but will remain qualified and eligible through that process, from knowing what they don't know, from ensuring that they don't make certain mistakes that the normal population would not know to make or not. So that, that part is very important, as well as the ultimate financing piece that we do. Very familiar, and it is important that the financing process also works with different resale restricted properties, and the language within resale restrictions is working with secondary financing as well as appraisers, as well as underwriting, and that those loans can all be layered. Now, one of the strengths that we have is also layering or providing different layers of financing. To give you an idea, today, we're providing up to $145,000 in down payment assistance for single eligible households, because we know the importance and what that means. In some cases, that is the only way for some to become homeowners. So this project is very exciting, and to know what it will be able to provide to, to folks in the community, and knowing that it's something that is not very common and we don't find today. So very excited to be here and to work with this great team. Thank you again.
And lastly, to introduce our builder and project architect for the project, Sarah
Good evening, Mayor Angler, Mayor Potem Jones, City Manager, City Staff, and Council Members. Thank you all for considering the Peoples' Development Team for the Hillcrest project. As Veronica mentioned, my name is Sarah McCarthy Garcia, and I'm a partner with McCarthy Companies, the proposed builder for this project. As Ken mentioned, Peoples is their own builder, but we were contacted to join this team because we have particular expertise with affordable for-sale housing. I just wanna pause for a second and make sure everyone can hear me okay. Yes, okay, great. As our years in the industry grow, we've found that in order to successfully create these affordable housing communities like Hillcrest, it really takes a proven village. This village is composed of government support, community leaders, housing development teams, and financial institutions, and we at McCarthy are thrilled to be a part of this village for the Hillcrest project. So a little bit about McCarthy, we're a Ventura-based residential developer and builder. Over the last 42 years, our business has focused on meeting the needs of housing, both affordable and market rate. We specialize in developing and building multifamily, mixed-use, senior, and single-family home communities. Over the last decade, we've managed and/or built roughly 20 affordable housing projects, which equates to over 600 affordable units throughout the tri-county area. Seven of these projects were partially funded with the Housing Trust Fund, Linda. Four of these were designed by DeChecco Architecture, so our experience with this team is deep. And if you were to drive by any of these projects, you'd be pleasantly surprised at how high-end they actually look. We take great pride in the quality of our projects. We're intentional with our design and our build philosophy, from market rate to affordable, it's consistently our goal to produce housing that meets the needs of each resident and the surrounding community as well. We always wanna reinforce an aesthetically pleasing exterior that resonates with the existing neighborhood, as well as offer comfort and convenience to the residents. With each project, we build it with a high-touch frame of mind. I just wanted to share a quick side note that I felt had some merit. McCarthy has developed, managed, and built projects throughout the tri-county, and specifically in Ventura, Ventura County, every city. 95 of our employees and ownership team are Ventura County residents, and I share this to hopefully instill confidence in you all that this means we're embedded in the community, we're dedicated to playing a fundamental role in improving it, because like you, we're gonna be driving by wanting to feel proud of this contribution to the community that we all live in as well. So, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna keep it really brief because you've listened to everybody else talk about this already. Mark DeChecco, very proud to be here. We are a local Moore Park-based architecture firm, we've been in practice for 32 years here in Ventura County. The rest of the development team, from the plant, from the landscape, landscape team to the civil engineers to other members of the team are all also Ventura County-based. We built multiple projects, as you've heard, with this development team specifically. We built with, we have projects with People's Self-Help, we built projects specifically with McCarthy, we built multiple projects that have, the financing team as well. So all of us have done this before. We also specialize in affordable housing and homeownership housing as well, and I'm, at this point, I'm really confident that we can produce a project that we can all be proud of, and as Sarah mentioned, we'll all be driving by it because we're gonna be neighbors. Thank you very much for this.
Thank you. The RSG consultant touched already on the development proposal, and I know it's described in the staff report, but I did just wanna share a couple high-level points about the project concept. That was the subject of our proposal, so as we approached the site, and in general, when we approach development site, our goal is, we wanna be context-sensitive, and we wanna produce a project that fits the, the location and is responsive and respectful to surrounding immediate uses. In this development proposal, we, we are, we're, we're looking to, as far as the context-sensitive component, we're looking to produce a townhome-style development, approximately 78 townhomes. Each home would be a two-story dwelling. Most buildings are proposed conceptually to be two stories, although some buildings would have a three-story element. All the, there would be 14 separate buildings arranged around courtyards, and in consideration of the fact that the site backs up against, there, there is a single-family neighborhood immediately adjacent to the site, we tried to step back the, set back the project and ensure that those buildings would stay two-story to be responsive to our neighbors there. And so that's, in general, how we approached the site, we really do want to create a project that meets the city objectives and is responsive to neighboring uses. And, and, and we also are really committed to sustainability, so just a few of the elements that we are, that we typically incorporate in our affordable housing developments, including our for-sale developments, we, we do all-electric development, we incorporate onsite renewable energy, we strive to incorporate water-efficient fixtures as well as landscaping that's native, low-water use, drought-tolerant, and, and then there's also greenhouse gas reduction component to our projects. We strive to do infill housing that has access to nearby amenities, including transportation, and we try to design communities that are bike-friendly. And we also intend to incorporate, to make this project EV-ready, to incorporate the infrastructure to support electrical vehicle charging stations. And in closing, I would like to just ask our VP of Homeownership, Cheryl Flores, to touch on a couple of the homeownership-related points on this project, as that was a fundamental driver of our development concept. Thank you again.
You can, yeah, that's a good slide to start on. Thank you, I'm very pleased to be here tonight and presenting this. As you're well aware, the median home prices are just under a million dollars in your area, and that isn't very affordable to very many families and households. The Hillcrest home prices, they're gonna be affordable to families below 80%, below 120% of median income. We'll ensure that no one, no household pays more than 35% of their income for housing costs. Homeownership creates stability, we can go to the next slide, please, Gary, thank you. Homeownership creates stability not only for the households, for the families, but for your community as well, because people, when they have a stable life, they become more involved in their schools and their communities. It protects households from rent increases and lease terminations. Homeownership builds, helps families build wealth. The Hillcrest homes will be affordable, they'll be deed-restricted for the initial homeowners and also for all future homeowners. Buyers will be income-qualified, the initial ones and the future ones. The regional model for our, this homeownership project, we hope will be replicated throughout other communities. So we really wanna thank you, the council, mayor, and staff for, you know, being so proactive and proposing and making this opportunity possible. So thank you. Our team is welcome to answer any questions you may have tonight.
If I can, Council, I just had.
If I can, counsel, I just have one additional item I wish to discuss. I hope that, based on what they've shared with you, you can get a sense of our excitement. When we met with this team, they are extremely well-qualified, and the interview group believed they would provide just the tools necessary to build a beautiful project here in Thousand Oaks. So, in addition to the request to move forward with People Self-Help, we also tonight are asking that the city manager be able to initiate the preparation of an exclusive negotiating agreement. The E&amp;A will be between the city and People Self-Help. It typically includes the defined negotiating period, an outline for the negotiations process, and the rights and obligations of the parties. It's our hope that during this time period, we're going to complete any additional due diligence that is needed, we're going to refine the project, and ultimately come to a development agreement that will transfer the Hillcrest site and set the terms and conditions of development. We anticipate that a draft E&amp;A will come back to the council in early 2023. As was mentioned, representatives from the city, People Self-Help, and the entire development team, and RSG, our affordable housing consultant, are available to answer any questions that you might have.
Ms. Builder, opinion?
Thank you, Mayor Engler. So, thank you for the thorough presentation and also the testimony from the candidate here tonight. I heard that this whole process will take up, or may take up to, four years. Is that what I heard?
Well, that's going to depend in part on how quickly we can move through this process. By all means, city staff would work diligently, once it, you know, assuming it were to move forward and enter the development process, you know, we would do our best on our side to move the project forward.
Very good. I would imagine that, as we do with some of the other projects, some things could be expedited?
Absolutely. As a reminder, you know, the item before tonight is to move forward the exclusive negotiating agreement, so that, that will be the key component that will allow us to, once those terms are agreed upon and approved by the city council, will allow us to move into the, what you would consider the traditional planning process and development process. We're going to certainly be working to do as much as we can concurrently. In fact, our team, if council chooses to move forward tonight, will have a quick huddle up in the lobby just to talk next steps, and we've already had some of those initial conversations about what, what our team would look like. Our public works team has already done due diligence on some elements of, of the site, and our planning team has already done some initial reviews and have been involved in the process. So we're going to certainly, this is a priority project for, for the council, we're going to certainly do everything in our power, as we do with, with all priority projects, to, to move them forward.
Thank you. I am extremely pleased with what I have heard so far. I'm not sure how many public speakers we have, but it seems to me that the city is moving in the right direction with this, and that we made the right decision when we decided to purchase that property. Thank you.
Mr. Adams, you had your hand up?
Do you have public speakers?
This is, this is for questions of our staff, and then we'll have public speakers.
I'll reserve my comments for a little bit later.
Very good. Well, Mr. Jones?
I can do the same thing. I wanted to make a comment or two. Let me just say, I was very heartened by the last woman who spoke, because she said that people that own homes are more involved in the community. And I, I've said that, and perhaps I was misunderstood of saying that reflected poorly on people who rent. I didn't mean to do that, but I agree with that 100%, and I'm so glad that this is going to be a for-sale project, because I think it gives particularly younger people a foothold in homeownership, which I think is very important. And I'd like to ask some more questions of staff, but I don't know if that's appropriate right now.
It is, if you have any questions of staff or need to clarify issues.
Well, I wanted to ask the developers.
Feel free.
Okay. I'd like to know what price range these units may be in, and the relative size of the, of the units. You say they're all two-story?
Yes, the living area is designed two-story. I'm not sure when we added the one-bedrooms mark, are those flats, or those are also two-story, right? Right. And the one-bedrooms would be stacked on top of a garage. You asked the price range. The price, of course, is preliminary, based upon our estimated costs and the estimated incomes, but they're starting around $275,000 and approaching $600,000 for the higher-income levels. Did you have a third question, Mr. Jones?
Well, I was interested in that, in that price range, and the size of the units. Obviously, the smaller ones are the lower price.
Let Mark comment on the size.
And I think it's also important, just to remind counsel here too, since we haven't gone into the planning process here, so there's a lot left to be refined, exactly how many of what bedroom categories, and the shape and configuration. So when we're speaking, we're speaking in sort of rough terms right now.
Yeah.
No, I just wanted to get a general feeling for it.
Yeah, the one-bedrooms are probably under 1,000, but the two and threes range up to about 1,500 square feet. They're very, they're designed to be very economically spaced, there won't be a lot of hallways, but the rooms will be quite usable in size. Thank you.
And I was glad to hear that they will, I believe, be very attractive units, and, and not necessarily, if that's a stigma for someone to say, "I live in a fourth block", you know, I don't think it is, but if that might be, the fact that I understand from your testimony that these will be attractive units and will blend into whatever housing style that you have, I, I'm very heartened about it. I agree that, I, I just am excited to hear you're going to do this, because I've been, I like a stuck record. Every time we have a project that they're recommending apartments, I say, couldn't we have some condos mixed in or townhouses? Because I think it's important for young people to get a stake in homeownership. If it's possible, then you can build on that and do a little better. If you're just paying rent all your life, you don't have the ability to do that. Thank you.
Mr. McAmmy?
Thank you, Mayor. Excellent presentation, People Self-Help Housing Corporation, thank you. That was very informative. I'm not sure if this question needs to be directed towards staff or a consultant that came on board. We mentioned some occupational classifications that would benefit from this, in the low-income range of $51,000 to $81,000, being nurses, teachers, police, buyer. Will other occupations and professions be included in that, or is it exclusive for those ones listed?
I can answer that. That was just an example of some of the occupations that qualify for that income level, but it'll be anybody that is at the income level, so just a few examples.
Okay, so it's not exclusive for those, it's just anyone who comes into that income range? So it could be a number of different occupations, because I've always held that we're going to start seeing a teacher crunch here in a few years. As our current teachers retire, they won't be able to attract new and keep new teachers because they can't pay them enough to live in Thousand Oaks. So again, I've always been pushing for teacher housing and resident housing for our hospitals, but I've been told that's not possible, to make it exclusive for those occupations without excluding others. The second is that, let's say a nurse moves in at $60,000 a year, starting for the, for the low-income level, and is married after that point, and now the combined income, let's say realistically, could be $140,000, $150,000 a year. What now happens to that person that owns that home because they've now gone over the threshold of the income limit?
The nice thing about the homeownership model is that the monitoring is just really ensuring that they're the primary resident, and so in this case, they would still be the owner of the home, and there would really be no other real, you know, consequence, just as long as that's their primary residence.
So they could come in, the one, let's say the nurse, teacher comes in at $60,000, gets a pay raise to $120,000, marries, and marries someone who's making $150,000 a year, so they would be $270,000 in combined income. There would not be any repercussions of, you need to move out, or you need to find another place to live. They're, they're solid, is that correct?
That's correct. The only limitation is upon resale to the next owner, but for the existing homeowner, there'd be no repercussions.
Okay, thank you. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. McAmmy. Just a couple of quick questions, I think, having to do with the resale restrictions. Can you go a little bit into some of the mechanisms that you use for the resale restrictions, and how do we, I mean, I think this is a great idea to have this, the ability of some people to be able to start to create a little bit of wealth through homeownership, but in terms of how does that get passed forward, and what types of restrictions are in place for that? I'll throw it over there to our, to our team.
Well, we haven't looked out all the details yet, since we're not even totally approved yet. We're inclined to base the resale price upon the change in income from the time, you know, the average median income, so that the homeowner would have some of the appreciation, but yet we would hold down the price. And Mr. McAmmy's question about, could a family stay in their home forever? They, they definitely could, as Tara answered. However, they may, many people may want to move to a bigger unit with a yard or something like that, so we would expect there'll be some turnover repeatedly. Yes.
And then, the affordability, of course, is related somewhat to the donation of the land that the city is willing to, has already, I guess, given to the land trust. Is that, is, how big a factor is that in being able to provide this affordable option for people?
A very large factor, because the $10 million, if you're dividing that among 78 households, I don't remember the math exactly, but it's around $145,000 or something, that that household is not having to make payments on. So that's reducing their monthly loan servicing, so it greatly increases the affordability.
Thank you. Any other questions, colleagues? I'm sorry, come on down.
I was just going to expand a little bit on that, on the question about affordability and resale restrictions. I think traditionally, when we look at, as part of the development agreement, is going to be how, how that resale restriction will, will happen, for low-income or moderate-income households. Upon resale, so we need to establish the initial sales price based on those factors, which will take into consideration interest rates at the time, as well as whatever's published. And I believe if the state of California's income limits will be used per household size, then those would be used, and subsequently used for any future sale, whenever that does occur. There'll be a mechanism, which is more of a relativity of whatever the price will be, as well as whatever the income limits change, whether that, say, that homeowner sells in five years, 10 years, 15 years, there'll have to be an income methodology to establish at the beginning to know what that resale price would be at that point in the future as well. But has to be sold to another low-income, or subsequently to another moderate-income household at that point.
Thank you. We do have a couple of public speakers, I think we'll go to our public speakers now. Both are on Zoom. We have Mr. Alex Russell, and followed by Mr. Tim Gallagher, Gallagher, I'm sorry. So, Mr. Russell.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alexander Russell. I grew up and work in Thousand Oaks, and actually attended preschool at this property, so this is a very exciting opportunity for me personally. And I'm also the Chair of the Board of the Housing Trust Fund of Ventura County, and the Housing Land Trust of Ventura County. Both the trust fund and land trust are appreciative of the city's past support, and are excited to be part of this amazing local community team. In particular, we're grateful for the potential land donation that will keep this property affordable in perpetuity, and as Linda Brontweger mentioned, will help us leverage this land via state and other government and private resources, so that we can bring even more funding to Ventura County and our community. Again, on behalf of that trust fund, and the land trust of Ventura County, we want to express our gratitude to the city council and to the city staff, and we look forward to working with you to create critically-needed homeownership opportunities for lower-income residents of our community. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Mr. Gallagher. Mr. Gallagher, are you there?
Yes, I am, sorry about that.
Very good. Go ahead, sir.
Just wanted to say a couple of good words tonight about city staff and council. I know you folks take an awful lot of criticism for various decisions that you make over time, but this decision to purchase this land and, and set it aside for affordable housing for purchase was one of the best decisions, I think, this council's ever made, and you're leading the way in the fight for affordable housing for sale in this county. So thank you for that. Everything else I could say has already been said tonight, except for one thing, I really love this team that has put this proposal together. You know, in the 1990s, the USA basketball team had a, a dream team, and a phrase that's been overused, but you really have a dream team of affordable housing developers putting this proposal together tonight, and I urge you strongly to give this a 5-0 vote and all your confidence. Thanks very much.
Thank you, sir. That's our last public speaker, so I would turn it back over to our council members for more comments. Ms. Builder, opinion?
Thank you. This is not a public hearing, so we don't have to close it, right? Okay, very good. This, this is exciting, actually. This started last February, when we, when the parcel went up for sale, and here we are, just a year and a half later. I'm astounded at how quickly this has progressed. I really am, and I thank staff, I thank the leadership of our city manager, Drew Powers, as well as the assistant city manager, Ingrid, and so many others on, on the team. It is with absolute excitement that I would like to move to approve staff recommendations for this. It's historic.
Thank you, and Mr. Adams?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I tell you, I cannot stress enough the bold and positive action that's in front of us tonight by the city of Thousand Oaks. We're going to have an opportunity to provide affordable housing linked with homeownership here in the city, and our residents are highly attuned to the affordability issues that we face here in the city. And now, this council and the staff and People Self-Help have the opportunity to deliver affordable housing linked with homeownership. And it's not like we haven't worked in affordable housing. Over the last year, we've approved 114 units of affordable housing for rent, but affordable housing doesn't just happen. That came with a lot of work and a lot of developer agreements with the builders here in town, but that's a pretty big number, 114 units. And now, our city has stepped up and made a purchase of land that we will pass along to People Self-Help to allow for homeownership as well, which is a significant step up from, from just the rental market. It's really incredible that we're able to put this together, and I, I just think that families here in Thousand Oaks, the American dream is to own your own home, and now, for the first time ever, there are going to be families here in Thousand Oaks that can really realize that American dream, to own their own home, to raise their kids in, to build some wealth, build some equity over time, which is what a lot of- to build some wealth, build some equity over time, which is what a lot of us had the opportunity to do many, many years ago when things were a little bit cheaper. So I really want to commend the city, the staff for putting this project together. It's, it's really monumental. And I'm looking forward to working with People's Self-Help. I think you've got a great team. I think we're going to put forward a really excellent project.
Mr. Jones, you're next up.
Yeah, I would just echo what councilman Adam just said. That's exactly the way I feel about it. I, I used, this building, if you can believe it, as a hospital in 1965. That's what it was when I came here a little earlier. And my grandson also used it as a school. I think he went to most of his elementary classes there. That's the Christian school there. So it's a old building and it has done some, you know, it, it has provided services in many ways in terms of health and education. And I think it's very fitting now, it's, the building is seeing its demise, but it is paving the way through the foresight of our staff in seeing that site as an opportunity to purchase for the idea of affordable housing. I, I really like the idea of having all levels of income people living in Thousand Oaks. And I particularly, somebody brought up earlier that, you know, beginning professional people really don't have the resources to buy a house. So this, I think, will get people into the homeownership that, you know, might otherwise probably never have an opportunity here in Thousand Oaks. I, I just think that it gives us the opportunity to be a well-integrated community with all levels and, you know, different people. I think that provides an atmosphere of, for the children growing up here to see what democracy is like and to see that people are, you know, from various backgrounds and income levels and so forth. And that, you know, they, they can learn to have respect for people of all incomes, all races, all religions. And I think that's what America should be. There was a play when I was in high school by Thornton Wilder. Does anybody know the play I'm talking about? Anyway, it made that point. It, it's a famous play, but not in my mind tonight. So I, I'll stop the sermon, but I, it really gives me a lot of joy and pleasure to be able to have this go forward. And I believe we have the right outfit here in front of us. So I would like to recommend approval of choosing them as our group to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. McNamee?
Thank you, mayor. Homeownership is a, a big step for people in their lives, provides stability in the cost of housing. It allows them to build equity for future purchases of a different home down the road, gets their foot in the door to the appreciation that occurs in most real estate markets. Homeownership is not a right. It's a privilege. It's a privilege that is earned through having enough saved up for a down payment, an income level that qualifies them for a loan if they so do want to get a loan as compared to purchase outright, having a credit score that shows that they're responsible with their money, having six months in the bank to cover principal interest taxes and insurance, and a job that's stable so they can have ongoing payments so whoever made the loan will receive the loan payments each month. Part of the purchases of most people in homeownership is not only buying the structure, but the land below. And what we have done here as a city is that we have used taxpayer money to purchase the land to be donated for this effort. And as feel-good as that is, and charity is often wonderful, and all the people here on council, and I'm sure here in the audience, are very charitable in their daily lives in various ways. But what this project is doing is forcing government tax dollars to be used as a charity to benefit a certain group of individuals who are at a certain income level, who in my opinion has not earned the down payment, monthly payment, credit score, ongoing income to afford housing in this community. What we have done here is made government into a charity. By doing so, there is 78 homeowners that are being excluded, who have worked hard, saved their money, cleaned up their credit score, and have a job that can afford to live here in Thousand Oaks. I am vehemently opposed to government being a charity. I believe in giving a hand, but not a handout. This is a handout. And it feels good to help people that are poor, and we all help those in need. But government should not be a charity with taxpayer dollars. And I'm going to oppose this because 78 people, 78 families, 78 homeowners are being excluded because this council feels so good as they pat themselves on the back, saying, isn't this wonderful? But they have now made government into a charity, which I very much oppose. Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. McNamee. The, I know we disagree on this. I don't see this as a charity in any way, shape, or form. This is a public, identified public need that we are fulfilling in the same way we have parks, in the same way we have streets, in the same way we have sewers, in the same way we have any other infrastructure that serves our community. To be able to have people in our community who are able to partake in being part of our community is an important aspect of what we do here. So I don't see this as a charity in any, any way, shape, or form. The City of Thousand Oaks, for decades, has taken an approach of helping to provide housing for workforce housing. Our partner, Mini Mansions and Area Housing Authority, have hundreds and hundreds of units that they administer for people who are in town and are, have a workforce income. The City of Thousand Oaks, in the last year, as Mr. Adams pointed out, have, have asked our partners in development to provide over 100 affordable units for the next 50 years. This aspect of what we're doing tonight, of bringing on a, a group that can provide for sale affordable housing, is another missing piece of what we are trying to accomplish here, of providing housing at all levels of income, especially workforce housing. This is an important part of the puzzle for us that we need to take, to take pride in. The fact that we need to help out on this, the, the purchase of the land is necessary for this to be accomplished, in the same way as we purchase land for any other aspect of what this city does. So with that, I would support the, the motion. And I would, oh, one more. Ms. Bill DeLepenha.
Thank you, Mayor Angler. Yes, as maker of the motion, I would just, to finally state that where, while there are differences in, in philosophy, there is absolutely no doubt that, that the City of Thousand Oaks is taking a historic step. It is a step that takes courage and it is a step that will help improve our community and help improve, really, the overall atmosphere in our community because we do need the store manager to be able to somehow live here, or the office manager, or your dentist, or, I'm, I'm sorry, dental hygienist, for example. We have been fortunate to live in the City of Thousand Oaks. It is a phenomenal city. It is phenomenally run. Crime just dropped 22% in what already was one of the safest cities in the entire nation. And so we have to ensure that we also make it affordable for those who are part of our economy, the small business owners, some of whom struggle. And we have proven that that can be done when you are fiscally conservative, such as the City of Thousand Oaks has been since day one. We're not just giving away money. We are actually planning very thoroughly and everything is looked at and evaluated with a fine-toothed comb through our finance department led by Jamie Boscarino. And one other person that I wanted to point out, who has been essential in this, is Gary Rogers, whose last day is today. And really, this is something that the city should be proud of and that our community will be proud of. And those are my final comments, and I call for a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bill DeLepenha. Ms. Madam Clerk, please.
Councilmember Bill DeLepenha?
Yes.
Councilmember Adam?
Yes.
Councilmember McNamee?
No.
Mayor Protem Jones?
I'd like to vote I in the, in the play I was thinking of is called Our Town. If you have a chance to see it, that's the type of community I, Thousand Oaks is, and I hope it always will be. Thank you.
Mayor Angler?
Yes.
And that motion carries 4-0 with Councilmember McNamee voting no.
4-1.
4-1. I apologize.
Yes, let's take about a five-minute break, and we'll try to hold it to five minutes. Mr. Adam?[1324.61]
(inaudible)[125.11]
So what I wanted to start with is just to mention that over 170 cities in California have inclusionary housing ordinances in place, many of them for a very long time, and many of them very recent. One of the reasons for that is with the six-cycle housing element, inclusionary housing became a very popular topic. So I've been a very, very busy person for the last two years, and still busy with people working on them. The primary reason that I find that jurisdictions impose inclusionary housing obligations is to help meet their regional housing needs assessment goals and soon-to-be requirements, if I don't miss my guess with the state. So within that construct, we try to structure our inclusionary housing programs in every community I work in to help you meet those RENA goals. And so that's the primary function of inclusionary housing, although there are other reasons to have it. So what I wanted to start with is the legal considerations and the statutory considerations. As Kelvin mentioned, I've been doing inclusionary housing ordinances for over the past 20 years. And within that time period, the whole environment for inclusionary housing has changed dramatically. It's moved from a concept that was really feared by a lot of communities and feared by a lot of developers into a structure that if properly done can help you meet your affordable housing needs while not pushing developers out of your community. And that's a really important part of any inclusionary housing program, is to create something that creates those balances. Also, over time, in the last 20 years, there've been a number of legal cases and statutes that help you and provide some guidance in what you can and can't do with inclusionary housing, although they're very careful not to give you really good, strong definitions so you kind of have to guess what they were meaning. And so with the fact that I've done over 30 of these, and as Kelvin mentioned, they've been evolving over time, they've been evolving with the trying to mind-read what the courts have said you can do and mind-read what the state says you can do. So they have hopefully, over the years, there've been a number of court cases over the years, particularly to establish that inclusionary is not an exaction, so it's not, it's not an impact fee, for example, it's a production requirement, it's a planning function. That was a really big case, and that was the case that justified that inclusionary can be imposed and that it's not against the California Constitution. And that went to the California Supreme Court. So that was the San Jose case. And then after the San Jose case, we had the then-Governor, the then-Governor, Governor Brown, who had said he wasn't going to push forward to rental being allowed until after that happened, and so then we had a whole avalanche of things happening. But, so what the courts told you along the way in this, in addition to saying it's a planning function, is that you have to be very careful that your restrictions are not confiscatory and that they don't deprive an owner of a fair return on their land or a developer a fair return on their investment. The tricky part is they don't tell you what that means. And so in each and every community I work in, when I look at this, I look at different parameters that are more relevant to that community to make sure that I'm creating a balance between the important goal of getting more affordable housing in your community and fulfilling your RENA needs, but also the important goal of making sure that developers' interests are balanced so that they continue to develop in your community. And that is, that's the balancing act that needs to take, take place in every community. And so the other thing that you really need to look at, and in Thousand Oaks, you're very fortunate in that you have a very strong real estate market. And so you have some leeway in this process of inclusionary because folks really want, would like to develop in your community. And so you have the ability to create some requirements that maybe some other communities that don't have a strong of real estate markets don't have that, that option. So, as I mentioned, 100, and over 170 have inclusionary housing ordinances. I have a recent survey, I update it all the time, of 85 of those cities and counties that have inclusionary housing. And I update that constantly because new, new cities and counties are added, and cities and counties update their inclusionary. I mean, effectively, you're updating an existing inclusionary housing program in your community. So you're, you're, in fact, we worked on it when it was originally done. But so we constantly, we constantly update that survey of cities and communities that have these programs. And then what I mentioned before is that a RENA target, so what, what RENA, your six-cycle RENA, told you, in terms of proportions, not in terms of numbers, but proportions of a very low, low, moderate-income housing that, that RENA's established for you, those proportions are a good starting point for looking at your inclusionary housing program. I went the wrong way. Okay. So, the survey, and it came with you, with your staff report of 85 cities and then 30 cities that are in Southern California-based. The key features and things that we'll be asking you about later in this discussion about how you'd like to think about proceeding with this are, for example, the threshold size of projects that will be subject to the inclusionary housing ordinance. So most communities establish some threshold that are not responsible for fulfilling an inclusionary requirement, some don't, some, some have actually set it at one unit. But most establish it somewhere between three and 10 units is a very common range that they're set at. And in the survey, the average threshold size is eight units, and the median threshold size is five units. Five units is an interesting threshold because it's also the threshold that the state density bonus sets for projects that can apply for state density bonus. Income and affordability-
Is that rental units? I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, it's okay.
Would the five units, would those be apartments that you're talking about?
Density bonus itself can be applied to ownership or rental units, it's more commonly applied to rental, but the threshold size that, that allows to apply for state density bonus is five, either for owner or rental.
Okay.
But way more commonly used for rental. Okay, so income and affordability requirements, they vary widely. Some cities have, have extremely high thresholds, like 30%, some have low thresholds, like 5%. But the most common range that the income and affordability restrictions fall in is 10 to 20%. If you look at the survey, you'll see that very few of the cities and counties in the survey fall anywhere outside of that range of 10 to 20%. And then the depth of affordability is really important to consider. And so how that depth of affordability affects the project economics is something that we're very focused on. And that affordability standard will typically be at a higher level for ownership units than it is for rental units. The other thing to think about is small projects experience a much stronger impact from an inclusionary or any kind of affordable housing requirement than larger projects because there are fewer units to spread that requirement against, and so those fewer units bear the economic impact. And so the size of project is another really important component that you want to think about. Covenant periods, and as, as the folks were, were talking about just before us, you know, covenant periods for ownership units, they're often set at 45 years. And the reason that they're set at 45 years commonly, but not always, is that was an old redevelopment standard. And so the California redevelopment laws set their covenant period at 45 years. So people searching for a statute said, let's do 45 years for, for inclusionary, and also to be consistent then with, with, so you could use your redevelopment money. It's not magic, there's longer covenants, there's shorter covenants, but it is, that's, that's where that came from. And then 55 years, again, that was an old redevelopment standard, and that's how that got put into most of these programs when it's 55 years. Also, density bonus, state density bonus again, has a 55-year covenant for rental. Now, what I've experienced recently in a lot of communities, and I actually think it's a good idea, is the notion of saying it's at least 55 years, and then, but it goes on for as long as the property is developed with residential use. So perpetuity, I think, is tough because somewhere along the way, your community, that might not be a residential area anymore, you might not want to be having to have residential development there. So I think it gives you the flexibility to say, okay, it's a perpetual requirement as long as this is, is residentially used. So that's, that's coming up a lot in programs that I've seen and I've been working on. Looking at the Southern California jurisdictions and the jurisdictions that are involved in that part of the survey are Ventura, Santa Barbara, Los Angeles, Orange, San Diego. That's the, the smaller group, it's a smaller subset of the survey, so the 85 down to 30. So those cities, cities and counties, they have threshold project sizes that range all the way up to 50 units, so, so that they wouldn't be subject to inclusionary until a project had more than 50 units. That's not common, that was one, one city. 15 of the, of the programs are set at five or fewer out of the 30, so half are set at that range. The inclusionary housing requirements, as I mentioned, they range from low to high, so they range from 4% to 30%, but 28 out of the 30 jurisdictions have requirements that range between 10 and 20%. So clearly, between 10 and 20% is your most common range for, for the income and affordability requirements. The other thing in the, in the 30, in the 30 jurisdictions is the ownership requirements are focused on moderate income, and I'll talk about that more later in the presentation, and the apartment projects and requirements are subject to very low or low, those are what the focus is for, for those restrictions. I mentioned the covenant period, same thing with the 30 jurisdictions as the 85. You see 45 to 55 years for ownership, 55 years for apartments with that, with that perpetuity codicil. The programs in the 30 Southern California jurisdictions all include an in-lufi option. There's a common notion that the program actually needs to include an in-lufi option, but not necessarily by right and only in given circumstances. It's not actually stated anywhere that it has to have an in-lufi option, but I haven't seen a program that doesn't. But with very much a range of, can a developer just come to you and say, I'm going to pay the in-lufi versus the city council only approves it in-lufi in the case of extreme hardship? So you have the flexibility with in-lufi to establish when and if you're going to allow it to be paid. Okay, so, the things that we're, we're looking for you to, to focus on tonight when we're discussing this after the presentation are the program standards to be considered for inclusion in your, in your program. So we, we're going to want to get input on the minimum project size that will trigger a requirement, the target income and affordability standards, the covenant periods, and, and importantly, the alternative ways that the inclusionary housing obligations can be fulfilled. So again, you're required to provide options, but you're not required to make them easy. And so what I like to do is I like to go through the options with you, and I will go through the options with you, and then give you the opportunity to say which of these options are appealing to you, which of these options are not appealing to you, with again the proviso that I think you're going to have to provide an in-lufi as an option. Another option that can be considered is allowing a development to provide their inclusionary units off-site in another location, and we'll, we'll talk about all these more, I'm just going to give you the list right now. Another option is to say that you're going, for an ownership project, you'd allow the affordable units to be rental units. There's a land dedication off, option, so a developer could give you land in, in fulfillment of their inclusionary housing requirement. And then acquisition and substantial rehabilitation of existing apartment units that are then subject to income and affordability restrictions. Those are the things we're going to talk about in depth now, those are the things we're going to come back to and ask you to, to give us feedback on, on what you like and what you don't like. As I mentioned before, inclusionary housing programs tend to set the affordability level for ownership units at the moderate income level, and the reason for that is especially in high-income communities that have high home prices, you start getting into gaps between the market rate price and the affordable price that become almost impossible for a developer to bridge without, without creating financial infeasibility. And even if you can get units, if you can make it work, say, the million-and-a-half-dollar single-family home, is then you have the policy decision about, do you want somebody paying $500,000 for the $1.5 million house, and that's the only inclusionary unit you get? So I think there are some real policy issues to discuss about ownership inclusionary and, and how it works effectively, and what product types within ownership housing that it works effectively, and how to deal with that. You can have low-income, affordable ownership, but as, as was mentioned in, in the, in the last item, basically, you're getting low-income homeownership because you're giving them the land. So that's the way that that is made feasible in, in that, not a bad thing, not at all, but I'm just saying that to get the biggest bang for your buck in the inclusionary process, keeping in mind that you can only expect inclusionary to fulfill a small amount of your overall affordable housing need because you're relying on the development community to fulfill that obligation for you. And if you set your bar too high for your development community, they just won't develop. You know, it's the old saying, 15% of zero is zero. So you have to be very, very careful, I'm going to say this a bunch of times, to balance the clear need for affordable housing against the need for a developer and a landowner to get a reasonable return on their investment. One, because you have to, and two, because you can't make somebody develop. And so that balancing act is the key to a successful inclusionary housing program. Moving to rental, AB 1505, which is the legislation that came out after the San Jose case. So the San Jose case said that you can do inclusionary housing, but only for ownership because there was the Palmer case in 2009 where the city of LA attempted to impose income and affordability restrictions on rental units, but they didn't have a program, they didn't have an inclusionary housing ordinance, they didn't have an affordable housing requirement, they just imposed it sort of willy-nilly in, in the downtown area of Los Angeles. They got sued by Mr. Palmer, and Mr. Palmer won. And then they appealed, and Mr. Palmer won again. So then there was no ability to do rental inclusionary from 2009 until 2019 when AB 1505 went into effect. AB 1505 went into effect after the San Jose case, when Governor Brown then said, well, okay, if, if inclusionary is legal, then I guess you can do rental, and then the legislature passed it. But when they passed it, they also put in some provisions to guide you in, in the kind of restrictions that, that the Housing and Community Development Department, the state of California viewed as feasible, if you will. And what, and they aren't necess, they were, it was guidance, it wasn't a requirement. But what they said specifically in AB 1505 was that they really liked an 80% of AAMI, area median income standard. They didn't like deeper affordability in, in the inclusionary. They also said they really liked 15%, and they didn't like more than 15%. Again, it wasn't required by the statute, but what they said is if you do something more stringent, you have to prove up that it's viable. And if you, and this isn't the case in Thousand Oaks, but if you haven't fulfilled 75% of your above-moderate income requirement from RENA, and you haven't fulfilled your housing element reporting requirements, they can make you do a feasibility study, and they can review that feasibility study. But what they also have the ability to do, just being HCD, is to tell you that you're a constraint to housing. And if you're a constraint to housing, it messes up your ability to keep your housing element in conformance and, and certified. So they always hold this club over you. But even with that, there was confusion because they wrote it into the statute, but they didn't really say you have to do it, they just said they liked it. So then they subsequently wrote a memo, a, a technical memo of guidance that they sent around where they said, no, we meant it. We really like 15% at low, and we don't like more stringent than that. Again, not required by statute, but HCD has made their, their point clear. HCD is not overly excited about inclusionary from a housing element standpoint, they count it sort of as gravy, you know, it's nice you have it, but they're not necessarily saying, great, that's going to fulfill your RENA need. And that just plays back to my concept of what I'm saying is inclusionary will provide you some of the affordability that you're lacking, but it's not going to fulfill your RENA, it's just not. It's, it's going to, it's going to help, but it's not going to be the big ticket. So, the other thing to think about, though, when you're thinking about the 15% at, at 80% of area median income is, that's for projects that are providing their units on-site, their inclusionary units on-site. If you were to allow them to do off-site production, you could impose a stricter standard because it's an option, not a requirement.
Excuse me, would you speak a little closer to the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm so loud, I was getting farther and farther away because I felt like I was being so loud. Anyway, that, off-site, you could require it to be greater than 15% or a deeper affordability. And we're going to test all of this in the financial evaluation to identify what we think is supportable. I'm just giving you the basic precepts that we're going to be working from. Also, and this is a really important point, is developers who have, are faced with an inclusionary housing requirement will often turn to state density bonus as a means of mitigating the impact of the income and affordability restrictions. So that has a pro and a con. The, the pro is that you're going to get deeper affordability because it just makes mathematical sense for developers to fulfill that requirement with very low-income units. And the con is you're going to get density bonus where you may or may not want it. And so I think what's happened with your general plan is you've set up your general plan in a way that recognizes that density bonus is going to be used, and so it established limits where even if density bonus is used, you still have a general plan that works. But I say this every time because it's important to understand, if you do inclusionary, you will see density bonus, mostly on rental. On ownership, the only times I see it being done is if the parking restrictions are really onerous in a community, or if the Florya Ratio Restrictions are more onerous than what's met by the zoning, is then they'll do a very small density bonus or no density bonus at all, just to get the development standards waivers. But mainly, you see density bonus used for apartment development. Okay, so, let's talk about in-lufis for a minute. The things to be considered by the city council are, do you want to allow in-lufis to be, allowed to be paid by right by developers? Recognizing if you allow it to be paid by right, most developers will pay it, as opposed to producing. So that's something to really keep in mind when you're looking at in-lufis. Or do you want to only allow them to be paid under specified circumstances? For example, you almost have to provide an in-lufi option for an extreme hardship. You don't really have much flexibility. If, if they can prove extreme hardship, for which I have a definition, then, then an in-lufi is, is a good way around that. So what you want to look at is what are your program goals? If your program goals are to get these units built on-site within market-rate projects, spread your affordability around town throughout these projects, then you're going to want to allow the in-lufi to be paid very sparingly. You're not going to want the in-lufi to be the primary option that developers are allowed to accept. Talking about ownership, as I mentioned earlier, when you get into your higher-priced homes in the community, you know, in my market survey that I'm working on for this, you know, and you know this, you know, there are homes that are $2 million homes being built, you know, it doesn't make a lot of financial sense to provide one $2 million affordable housing unit. And so in those cases, it may be a good idea to allow the in-lufi to be paid, and they use those fees to get deeper affordability in, in an affordable project, in an actual affordable project. The other thing to think about is small projects. Small projects, again, as I mentioned, if you have a five-unit threshold and you provide even a 10% requirement, that's .5 units, so that's one unit out of five, that's a big impact on a five-unit project. So that's two things to think about, is where do you want to set your threshold? But also, you know, do you want to allow in-lufis to be paid for, for small projects? The fourth one is the community's view on density and your view on density. So there may be places in town where you're okay with density, as you've done in your general plan, there may be places where you're not so happy with density and might not want to see it, and then offering an in-lufi option may be a very attractive option to avoid people using the density bonus, which will be very commonly used. And then the other, the final thing to think about is, you know, you do have this responsibility via the state to provide affordable housing development. So the more affordable housing development you get someone else to do, the less responsibility you're going to have to, to get it done. So these are the important things to think about with in-lufis and how they are paid. Then the less important thing for this discussion, but, but I'll go over it, is do you want that in-lufi to, to be equal to the difference in the cost between the market rate unit and the affordable unit had they produced it on-site? Or do you want to provide a discounted fee in some instances to encourage the use of the fee? Or do you want to create a sliding scale for projects small to, to not as small? So say, five to 20 units, do you want to create a sliding scale? So those are things that we'll be talking about and thinking about in the financial evaluation, and when we come back to you, to get more policy direction. So, the other options that I briefly mentioned earlier, and then I'm going to go over in more depth now, are other production options. So creating, one, one thing that's been coming up recently, if you have a big site, is being able to create a separate parcel within your market rate development, and then using that parcel as a dedicated affordable housing project. The advantage to that is then whoever develops that affordable rental project can go out and get leveraging sources like tax credits and state assistance funds that are available to dedicated affordable housing projects. And so you can get deeper affordability and you can get a greater percentage of affordable units. Off-site production, I don't see it working in, in most of the communities that I work in, just because, A, there's not a lot of land generally, and B, that mostly the communities I work in, the, the city council wants the affordable units to be in or near the, the market rate project. Land dedication is super tricky, super-duper tricky. It would have worked great for this project that, that we talked about right before this, where if you find a developer who gives you a site that's properly zoned, that's physically can accommodate the number of units, is in a location where you'd like to see affordable housing, where you, the city, have to pick the developer, and then you have to administer the, the program or the project, that's the only time land dedication really can work because that responsibility shifts most of it to you, as opposed to the developer. I've seen it done, I mean, this would have been a good example of it being done, but you need, really need to think it through when land dedication will be allowed and when it won't be allowed. Because the other thing is, is normally, land dedication's not enough to fulfill the affordable, the affordability gap between the market and the affordable, so other funding sources need to be found, and that needs to be considered before you, as a city council, accept that option or include it in your program. You're not required to include any of these options in your program, but you should include some of them by your choice. The problem with acquisition and rehab of existing units is it's very difficult to get RENA credit. And so, because basically, you're taking existing apartment units that may or may not be occupied by very low, lower, moderate-income households, and you're effectively pushing those people out and putting new people in, and so you haven't created new housing. There are some exceptions that, that state law allows you to get credit for, but it's very difficult, and so that's it. It's nice from a neighborhood stabilization aspect, but again, it's tough for RENA credit, and I like to really focus on RENA credit. Okay, so, what we're doing now, we're in the process of doing, is preparing financial analyses of prototype developments and to test what type of inclusionary housing restriction can be supported. And so what we do is we look at, we looked at the draft housing element, we're looking at development plans for projects that have been submitted recently to, to- at development plans for projects that have been submitted recently to planning, and then in our market surveys, we're looking at the types of units that we're finding in the market survey. And from that, we create prototypes. They're not actual projects, they're just composites that represent things that might be developed or potentially be developed in Thousand Oaks. So, just to talk about density bonus for a few minutes. State density bonus, it serves, state density bonus especially as it has evolved over the past 17 years in California. Every year, the state has amended the density bonus to make it more and more favorable to developers and more and more usable by developers with the goal of then, in return, getting affordable housing units. So, in 2006, it was almost impossible to use density bonus, and most developers just looked at it and said, why would I do that? In 2022, when you can get a 50% density bonus for providing 15% very low-income units, you see developers being much more interested in using density bonus. And so, I think it's really important to consider that factor, and it was considered in your general planning process, when you're looking at inclusionary. Because, in addition to getting that the density bonus itself, there are incentives and concessions that you have to grant by statute, and there are development standards waivers that you have to grant if the project can't be developed at the density allowed by the density bonus. One thing about state density bonus is they cannot pay an in-lu fee, so they must produce the affordable housing units. So, as part of our financial analysis, what we're going to deal in is not only regular projects that build just to the zoning standards, but projects that also can physically make use efficiently of state density bonus, to see how that affects the viability of an inclusionary housing obligation. Okay, so, I said this at the beginning, I'm going to say it now, and I'll probably say it again, at the end. It's really important when establishing an inclusionary housing program, the requirements can't be confiscatory, and they can't deprive an owner of a fair and reasonable return on their investment. This is very important, so this must be taken very seriously when creating an inclusionary housing program. What's nice about an inclusionary housing program in today's world is, as I just mentioned about density bonus, you have very little flexibility about what you can approve and what you can't approve for a project. They meet these basic standards. If you have an inclusionary housing program that establishes standards that are, you can't defy density bonus, but you do have more ability to control the type of development that occurs. It is important to note that if a developer uses state density bonus and creates very low-income units, you must also count those same very low-income units toward your inclusionary obligation. So, that was a NAPA case, and a lot of communities that had inclusionary before that were saying, no, you have to provide the inclusionary units on top of the density bonus affordable units. That is not the case. You have to double-count them. And so, that's something important to keep in mind. And then, the use of in-lu fees. So, we're just talking about things that, more things to consider. And so, the use of in-lu fees is at your discretion to create and help with producing affordable housing. And so, some communities that use in-lu fees extensively, use those fees to encourage a mission-driven affordable housing developer to provide 100% affordable housing project at deeper affordability. A number of cities I'm working in now are using them to contribute to homeless shelters. You can use it for homebuyer programs, you can use it for rehabilitation loans. As long as it's got a true affordable housing purpose, you can set up your requirements and your ordinance to identify what those in-lu fees can be used for, not limited just to this list. Okay, did I do it again? I did it again. Okay, so, we're going to try this. We would like to get your input somehow, in this framework, on the basic issues that we've talked about during this presentation. And we're going to do them one by one, and we're going to take notes. And we're not asking for specific answers at this time, we're asking for your feelings and what, you know, if you could have, you know, if you could have what you wanted, what would it be? And so, we're on ownership housing projects, and so, the first thing is onsite production.
Kathy, let me ask first if there's any overhead questions on your presentation that perhaps the council members have.
Sure.
Anybody have any overhead questions of what's been presented so far?
Well, I don't want to...
Mr. Jones.
You know, delay the process because we've heard a very extensive presentation so far. I was looking at the San Jose case, and it used a phrase that I'm not familiar with. It says, they said that, you know, the ordinance is fine. Exclusionary housing programs are a planning tool, and I presume that's what was desired, that the court would say, and not subject to nexus study under the Mitigation Fee Act.
Yes.
What does that mean?
So, there was an argument by the Building Industry Association in the San Jose case that inclusionary housing was an exaction, so it was a required payment of an impact fee. And it was the plan, it was San Jose's case, that it wasn't, that it's a planning tool. As a planning tool and it's production-based, so inclusionary housing, the whole notion is affordable units will be created, is different than an impact fee, which were commonly used, actually, when apartments couldn't be developed under inclusionary, which was under an impact fee, that the jurisdiction has to prove that future impacts warrant the payment of that fee. So, you have to prove a nexus between future need for affordable housing and this fee that's going to be charged. And so, that falls under the Mitigation Fee Act, and it can only be used for future demand, it can't be used for existing demand. And so, as in the other side of it, the San Jose side, was, no, it's a planning tool, it's production-based, it's not, it may have a fee, but it's a production program. And that's the push-pull on that, and the court found that it is actually a production requirement that may have a fee.
I see. This may not be the appropriate time to ask, but in just simple terms, what is the benefit of a city having an inclusionary housing program?
Mainly to get private sector developers to fulfill some of your RENA obligations.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that is one of the most detailed and complicated presentations I have ever been in. I've spent in a lot of presentations. Thank you for doing that, a lot to digest and filter out. And I'm glad you're here to guide us through this.
Thank you.
Leave it to Sacramento, they did a good job. There's that term, the owner-investor has a right to a fair and reasonable return.
Right.
In a businessman's eye, in an investor's eye, is that 5% return, cash-on-cash? 6%, 8%, 10%, 15%, 25%? Is that a fair and reasonable return supposed to be determined by this council as to what we will allow to happen? Because, here's the problem I see with this, some developers may not, because of these RENA numbers, inflating the price of the project, not be able to come through and say, I can't make this pencil out to get the rate of return that they desire.
Right.
So, therefore, we're never going to hear from those projects because Sacramento imposing this upon us is causing these projects not to be built, thus creating more of a housing problem. Are we being asked to determine what is a fair and reasonable return to tell the market, the developer, the builder, the consumer, what a fair and reasonable return is?
No, I think that's an excellent question. The answer is, the short answer is yes. The longer answer is...
I like your short answers, I'm so glad, thank you.
The longer answer is that in every community, well, let me put it a different way. Inclusionary housing will have a financial impact on private sector projects. There's just no question about that. It has an impact. So, the question is, how big an impact, and does that impact make it infeasible? As you mentioned, for some people, it'll remain feasible, and for some people, they'll say, no, I'm going to keep my existing use. For example, if you have an improved piece of property, you may not say, oh, I'm going to go ahead and sell my property for housing development because now I can't get as much money for it as I used to be able to get. I like to call it the stages of grief. So, what happens is, at first, you know, when you establish an inclusionary policy, the folks who've already bought land and are now subject to it are going to get less profit than they wanted. Then, everybody wises up, and they say, well, I'm not going to pay as much money for the land because I need to make my profit, or it's not worth my while to develop. And so, at that point, property owners say, well, I'm not going to sell my property for that. And so, then you move on to the next stage where, over time, land prices inflate enough and the development community moves back in and starts developing again. But this is where this balance is really important, and the courts didn't tell you what a reasonable return is. And in one community, a reasonable return is different than in another community based on the strength of your real estate market.
Are we supposed to come up with a reasonable rate of return in our minds' eye?
No, I am.
Or is that something you do?
That's something I'm doing.
And then, you're going to come back to us and say, can you live with 10%? Can you live with 12%? Is that the way this works?
I'm going to come back and say to you, can you live with these recommended inclusionary housing requirements? And I'm going to show you in my financial evaluation what I believe the impact is on land values and how long it would take market prices or rents to increase to balance that out.
I'm so glad we have consultants like you, thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Thank you for the 20-year experience lecture in 42 minutes, so thank you for that. Just, I have two quick overhead questions, I think. One, in reading a little bit about this on my own, there's a, there's a, different approaches where perhaps there should be a rigid absolute value that you put to some inclusionary housing number, say, say 15% that HCD likes.
Right.
Or is it better to build in flexibility based on the project that's presented, which will help us decide whether we give you recommendations of, we want 13.5% or whatever that number might be, or some other form of requiring that?
Okay, so, I would like to avoid you having to negotiate every single development project that ever comes to the city, and to have every developer tell you they can't possibly do anything more than 2%. So, I'm more on the rigid side of establishing a parameter, but I'm also very conservative. And so, when I project a supportable housing obligation, I've taken into account that if developers don't want to build in your community, then the whole thing's pointless. And so, I don't squeeze the last nickel out in my financial evaluation, I try to keep that balance. That's my whole goal, is so that the developers will go, wow. You know, it's sort of like when you raise the park fees, right? And then, everybody's going, ah, you know, didn't add to my home value, but I have to pay it, is like, you create that balance where the developer's like, no, I still want to develop, or I'm going to use density bonus. I mean, that's the other thing to think about, is, or I'm going to use density bonus. And that's going to really help mitigate that impact. But no, I really do think, and I also think it's just more legally supportable, and I'm licensed to practice law nowhere, but I think it's legally supportable to have a consistent standard rather than to be imposing one thing on one developer and something else. I think you just run into a fairness issue.
Thank you for that, good advice. And then, the other, the other thing, we just had recently, we talked a couple of weeks ago about our SB 9, which would include a number of small projects of two to four units. Would an inclusionary in-lu fee be applicable to those types of projects, or is that excluded by that law?
It's not excluded. So, you could decide you want to do it. I would say you'd need it, you'd, just from a financial feasibility standpoint, you'd need to allow an in-lu fee for it. You can't make them provide that extra unit as the inclusionary unit. But no, I think you could, I think you could establish a two-unit parameter. I mean, if you look at the '85 city and county survey, there are a few cities that have one-unit thresholds.
Yeah, I noticed that, which perhaps is the reason why. They wanted to make sure that there was no lot splitting and things like that.
It's not a bad idea.
Thank you.
Sure.
Ms. Bilder-Lepenya has a question now.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. So, my questions are as follows. Looking at the list, as you just mentioned, there are the threshold, one unit with setting aside 20% in Palo Alto, no, not Palo Alto, but Pasadena, for example. Some of the cities here in Ventura County, I think, Santa Paula and Port Juaniemi, I think they have a 25% set aside.
Santa Paula's in the survey, I think.
Which one?
I think Santa Paula's in the survey. Port Juaniemi is not.
Okay. Santa Paula, okay then. Yes, okay, so it's about 17%.
Port Juaniemi might be in it too. I just updated it within the last week or so.
And Port Juaniemi, I think, also had about 25.
What is it? Actually, Santa Paula's 10 and 15.
10 to 17, I think.
It's 10 to 15, I just looked that one up.
Yeah, it says 10 to 17.
That's Santa Barbara.
10 to 17 is correct.
Yeah. Ian pointed me to the wrong line.
Thank, you know, it's, I found it. And in your analysis over the years, how effective are these housing policies? I'd like to know whether they provide what they are supposed to provide.
I think the well-structured inclusionary housing policies have absolutely done what they're supposed to do, especially the newer ones. So, when you go back, I mean, people, communities have been doing inclusionary, well, since the '70s to some extent, but more commonly since the '90s. And I think that jurisdictions have gotten more effective in establishing parameters that do balance the developers' needs against the need for affordable housing. And, I mean, because I've done now 35 of them, and I'm not the only, you know, Kaiser Marsen's not the only entity that does these, is well-done financial analyses really help in establishing parameters that work, as opposed to creating parameters that really do act as a constraint to housing. And I think that's really important. And so, there are communities that will remain unnamed in the Central Coast that have established very strict affordability standards, and they're just seeing no development at all. And that's, I think, an implicit goal.
Mm-hmm.
And so, you just have to keep that in mind.
And so, communities that have a more reasonable inclusionary housing ordinance, do they see their RENA numbers fulfilled?
No, not by the inclusionary, no. I mean, it can only, because again, you're asking the developers to provide it, and it's only going to be a percentage, and especially with six-cycle RENA, those numbers are so bizarre, that, you know, you couldn't possibly expect an inclusionary ordinance to fulfill it all. It's just there to fulfill a part of it. And especially at the low-income range, because there's a fair amount of money out there, assistance money out there now for extremely low and very low, and the above-moderate obviously takes care of itself. And so, the low and the moderate are the two areas that there's not a lot of assistance money out there for. And so, inclusionary is a nice tool for that.
Yeah, those are the units that we desperately need in our city.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The discussion has sparked another question from Mr. McNamee.
Thank you, Mayor. You speak to balance, in that we're trying to find a balance here that works to satisfy Sacramento's need to have inclusionary housing for low and very low income and so forth. How many developers have not moved forward with projects because of the criteria set down by various cities, so that we can get an idea as to, this city has done this, and this many developers have not moved forward because of that, creating more of a housing shortage? Whereas, other developers did move forward when the criteria was this criteria.
Right.
There, do you have any idea how many development projects did not move forward? And again, I know it's maybe a challenge, but that would really be a nice guideline to see if we're in that balance, that sweet spot I think we're looking for.
Right. I will tell you, I did a survey, now it's a number of years old, of four cities that had inclusionary, well-done inclusionary, and I didn't work on all of them, so I'm not just tooting my own heart, that did inclusionary. And I looked at the building permit activity 10 years before and 10 years after, and there was no discernible pattern... and there was no discernible pattern in how building permit issuance went up and down in any of those four communities. They went up and down, but it didn't. It wasn't cycled around when the inclusionary was adopted. It was more with economic cycles. So you'll never know who didn't develop because they don't come tell you, I'm not going to develop in your community. What I will tell you is the Building Administration, Building Industry Association, who I have dealt with for now 25 fun-filled years in communities that I work in, almost coming to blows several times over those times, is they have over time come around to recognizing that they can't stop inclusionary. So in my early days of inclusionary, they would come to every city and say, you'll never see another housing unit developed here. Again, mark my words. What they've found, and what my buddy Bill McHenry, who I've known for a million years, has said is, he's taking a new stance with the BIA to not be so obstructionist with it and to just come in and try and help with something that is more workable for the development community, which I think is great. I think it's really good to collaborate. And we did, we did community meetings in October, September, trying to get that input because I think it's really important to get buy-in from your advocacy groups and your developer groups so that you can create something that everybody doesn't hate.
Sure, well, economically, again, you're never going to find out who the developers are that didn't move forward because it didn't pencil out to get the rate of return.
Right.
So we really can't answer that question. It's like playing Russian roulette and asking the survivors, did the game actually affect you? And they'll say no. But the ones who it did, you can't ask them that question.
No, that's right. But I will say, my survey with the 10 years before and after sort of indicated that there wasn't that much of a loss.
Well, yes and no. Because again, by doing all this, you're driving up the cost of housing, which in turn, the market starts to absorb, price of housing goes up. So yes, development can go forward, but at a higher cost. Absent these inclusionary housing, that RENA numbers that Sacramento's throwing at us, housing would drop. That's my argument. Mayor, go ahead.
Perhaps we should keep questions and we can argue against each other.
No, no, I just, because that's an important clarification for me, Mayor, and I thank you very much for the consideration.
You bet. Mr. Adams has a question.
Sure.
Might as well chime in, get my question in. So anyway, hi.
Hi.
So there's a direct relationship between the density that a city allows and what percentage of affordable a city could ask for to make sure the project would be market feasible.
Right.
For example, like, take a city like San Francisco. Maybe you could ask for 30% affordable because they allow a huge amount of density and big, tall buildings. And even with 30%, the builder could make it market feasible, make it work. But a smaller city like Thousand Oaks, where we don't have that kind of density, we don't have that height in buildings, that's going to, again, to make the project market feasible, limit the kind of percentage of affordable that we were going to ask for, wouldn't it?
Oh, yeah. No, I can guarantee you I'm not going to recommend 30%.
You could what?
I can guarantee you I'm not going to recommend 30%.
No, I know, of course not. I just use that as an extreme example to illustrate density versus what we can ask for.
Right.
Okay, and the second thing about the minimum housing amounts, it seems to me there's a big difference between rental and for sale. So I saw on here where the suggestion, maybe on the rental side, five units and anything above would require an inclusionary unit. And that, okay, I get that because, you know, the builder's going to take a hit on the rent, but not take an actual hit on selling the property. He's just going to get a lower rate of return because one of those units is going to be priced less than the others. But for the for-sale guy, if he has a minimum of 10 units and one of them has to be affordable, then he's going to sell that at a loss.
Right.
And that loss is going to be spread out amongst the other nine or 10 units, whatever it is. So it seems to me that we have to be careful on the for-sale side about how many minimum units we require. Same seems to me, volume is the key there to make the project feasible.
I agree.
So maybe 10 would be too low.
That's entirely possible.
On the for-sale side. And I think, what was the other one? Yeah, townhomes, you had 10, single-family 20. Because again, they're going to be sold, and a builder's going to take a loss, without question. And that loss is going to be spread against the rest of the unit. So the more you have for sale, the less the loss will be.
That's correct. And that's why I think for the smaller projects, I'm not saying necessarily raise the threshold, although that is a possibility, is to say, allow in in Lufi for small projects and then scale it up. So it's a sliding scale that starts low and gets bigger as the project gets bigger, as a reflection of exactly what you're saying.
So like, make an exemption for a smaller project?
Well, yeah, like saying, just using numbers. Say, any ownership housing project with 20 or fewer units is allowed by right to pay the in-Lufi rather than producing the units. And then not only that, say, say the achievable in-Lufi's $20 per square foot of building area. Just making numbers up. Then saying, look, if your project's got 10 units, we're going to charge you $10 per square foot. If it's got five units, we're going to charge you $5 per square foot. So that it doesn't, the smaller projects take, don't have as much of an impact.
Yeah.
So that's the sliding scale idea.
Right, because, I mean, yeah, I want to see the projects built. I don't want this to be a disincentive to build.
But then, I'm sorry to interrupt, but then if you set the threshold higher, then you don't get any affordable units. So if you set the threshold where they can pay the in-Lufi, you get the market rate units and you get the fee. So at least then you can put it towards other affordable housing activities.
Well, then I guess you're making a decision, do you want to be a fee collector or a housing builder? And, yeah, I mean, we collect the fee and there's things we can do with it. But, you know, I for one want to see the units built.
Oh, understood. I'm just using your example of your, and I'm not saying you said this, but if you're saying you want to set the threshold higher, then the units are built, but they're all market rate.
Yeah. All right. Well, you're going to run us through each one of these?
We're going to try.
Topics, okay, great.
We have two speakers. So let's get our two speakers before we run through this, if that's okay.
Sure.
So we get their input prior to us helping you with some ideas.
Great.
So very good. We do have two speakers that I'd like to call on now. One is Jackson Piper on Zoom, and Adam Haverstock is also on Zoom. Jackson, you are first up.
Thank you, members of the City Council, Mr. Mayor, and to the consultant who gave a very excellent, detail-filled presentation. I really appreciate that. My name's Jackson Piper. I live in unincorporated Newbury Park and have lived in this community for over 30 years. I think that this is a very excellent basis to start with for considering an inclusionary housing element. I would like to see, in terms of the charts that were provided at the end of the packet from the data collected by the consultant, if it's possible, I would like to see additional data on how effective these communities, different programs have been in terms of actually producing affordable units. I think that information would really be helpful in guiding Thousand Oaks to not only meet the kind of ideal, excuse me, of having an inclusionary ordinance, but also to actually produce the affordable units that we need that, again, as the consultant said, is only going to be a small piece of the puzzle to bring affordability to Thousand Oaks. But we do need to kind of maximize what this tool can provide. Aside from that, I would like to really ask that the city include requirements for both for-rent and for-sale situations. I know Ventura until, well, I think it still does only have a for-sale ordinance, and it's going to try and change that and add for-rent. But really, the affordability problem is so widespread that everything needs to have some sort of affordable option. And I'd like to see in-Lufi used as an option, but have it set at such a high rate that it's not just an easy out for any developer. It kind of, you know, the best thing would be onsite production of affordable units. The next best thing, if the developer doesn't want to do that, is for that money to go to the city and then have the city hopefully provide some affordable solutions other than that. Again, also, this will be something that may change with variables in the future. But for now, the city's ability to actually build affordable housing is probably going to be fairly limited. So that would probably end up being subsidy money for affordable units in other places. So please move forward with this, make it as wide-ranging as possible, and keep in mind, like the consultant said, that if you set it too high, it's going to discourage development. So you won't get any affordable units. And then if you set it too low, it's going to just encourage, you know, market rate and above development, and we'll miss out on the opportunity to develop the affordable units that we really, really need. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Piper. Adam Haverstock, please.
Thank you, Mayor Engler and council members. My name is Adam Haverstock, and I'm the Director of Government Affairs and Tourism for the Greater Caneo Valley Chamber of Commerce. I wanted to start by thanking city staff for including both the Chamber of Commerce and the development community in the initial discussions of both this inclusionary housing plan and possible future non-residential linkage fees. The chamber submitted a comment letter to the city council regarding the inclusionary housing ordinance and also provided comments to staff. I wanted to make two quick comments pertaining to this policy discussion for you tonight relating to that letter. First, as you all know, the City of Thousand Oaks itself doesn't build housing. What the city does is plan for housing to be built and then relies on developers to do the building. Developers are, in essence, the city's partner in meeting affordable housing goals. So we are very glad to be part of the conversation as you discuss these policies. Tonight's approval of the Hillcrest Christian School project is an amazing milestone for the city. Unfortunately, with the elimination of redevelopment agencies by the state, funding opportunities for projects like the Hillcrest Christian School site are far and few between. So partnership with developers will continue to be very important going forward. Second, Thousand Oaks is in the process of growing a life sciences hub in Rancho Caneo. Those new businesses and their employees will need places to live, including affordable homes, but also market rate workforce housing. In order to make sure that developers choose to build housing in Thousand Oaks as opposed to other nearby or similar cities, it is important to make sure that our inclusionary housing policy is on par or better than what other cities are offering. If our policies are too restrictive, then investors will take their business elsewhere. We will have to continue to look at empty or undeveloped parcels instead of seeing those parcels activated to the benefit of the community. Without the buy-in of developers, the city will not be able to reach its affordable housing goals, and market rate prices will continue to go up because of a lack of housing supply. Again, I want to thank city staff for including the chamber in the process. We look forward to helping the city craft a policy that is good for residents but also provides appropriate incentives for developers to build housing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And that's our last public speaker on this item. So I think, Kathy, we have the green light to go through your slides and take, start looking at some particulars.
Okeydoke. Okay, so let's start with the easy one. So onsite production, I'm presuming that you will want onsite production because that's the foundation of an inclusionary housing program. So anybody object to onsite production of affordable housing?
I would say onsite is preferred.
Okay, preferred.
Yeah, that's the biggest priority of all.
Yeah. Yeah, it's a box that just needs to be there so that we have a symmetrical box. So, but preferred is good guidance. So looking then to the right on onsite production, keeping in mind that I, from my experience, I find that moderate income in a high-income community works best for affordable housing requirements in an inclusionary housing program. But recognizing that low is sometimes included, those are shorter options. I would strongly advise against very low-income ownership. Except done by like a self-help organization as a 100% affordable housing project. But that's not inclusionary.
Just a quick question from me on that. Moderate, of course, is moderate. Low is something we also need in the area. Is low better achieved or is it more frequently achieved with the density bonus system that's also in place?
And rental.
And rental, yeah, sure.
I mean, there are communities that do low income as part of their inclusionary ordinance. All it means is you get fewer units. Because in the feasibility test, the lower the affordable price is, the bigger the gap, and so the fewer units you can have. So we can test low, if you're interested in testing low, and then you can make a decision based on the knowledge.
From my perspective, yeah, I would like to see what low looks like. We do have that need in town for, you know, to address that portion of workforce housing. I would at least like to see what the outcome is if we ask for 10% to say just out, 10% moderate and 5% low, you know, whatever that number works out to be. Ms. Bill de la Peña.
Thank you. If we could see the graphic again. I know it's been talked about quite often. The city is completely saturated with above-market rate units. I think we're over 600% in saturation and only 3% at very low.
Right.
So the need is really in the below-moderate.
Oh, understood.
That there is no doubt about that. And yes, we've had, we've approved some projects where there are very low-income units, and there are few because of what you just mentioned. But I certainly would want to include very low, low, and moderate with concentration on the lower income. It's vitally important.
In ownership?
Ownership and rental.
Okay, I mean, I'll run it because you've asked for it. I will promise you it won't work.
Okay.
For ownership. It can work for rental. The problem is, is that you get into property taxes and homeowners association dues and maintenance that a very low-income household on limited discretionary income just can't afford in a community like Thousand Oaks. I mean, I'll run it and you'll have an answer.
Yeah, that's fair. You can run it, and then we can look at it. And that way, we have, we can see it with our own eyes. That would be helpful.
And not debating the need. I'm absolutely not debating the need. So that, there's absolutely, the need is there.
Thank you.
Sure.
We have to differentiate between the two. For sale would be moderate.
Right.
Or it's not going to work.
Yeah, so we have an ownership chart, and then we have a rental chart, so it's the next chart.
Is that the next one then?
It is the next chart.
Okay.
So we're just going to go through this, and then...
Just a point of clarification, because I've heard this in the last few months. And maybe Mr. Parker can address it. The disparis, the disparate numbers that Ms. Claudia pointed out, 600% of, and I don't know the exact numbers, but can you go a little bit into that and explain where that might be coming from?
Sure. So those numbers come from our annual general plan progress report that we submit to HCD. And they specifically relate to the housing categories and the number of units that were provided in the last eight-year RENA cycle. So the 600% number in general is misleading. It doesn't account for all of the affordable categories that were provided as part of our RENA update. So what we reported out for last RENA cycle included housing in the very low, low, and also moderate categories. So that 600% number is a reference between, say, a very low number and the above-moderate income, which is not an apples-to-apples comparison. It's more apples-to-oranges, per se. So when you add up all of the affordable categories from moderate, low, and very low, the disparity is much smaller than that. But again, those numbers don't account for all of the work that the council has done in the last year, which is providing numerous affordable housing opportunities and projects such as the Kmart site, the Baxter Way site, Timber School. And the list just goes on and on in terms of the work that the council's done in that regard over the course of the last year.
Do we have an updated number of low-income, very-low-income percentage?
In terms of the current cycle, we're right in the middle of that right now.
So what is that gap between very-low, low-income, and then the moderate? So what is that gap between very-low, low-income, and then the moderate? If it's not 600% and 3%, what is that exact number?
Give me a moment, I'll pull it up.
Thank you for that clarification. Now back to our chart.
Okay, so we're still on onsite production, ownership housing units. So the percentage requirement, as I've mentioned, the most common percentage is run between 10% and 20%. It's very unlikely in a community like Thousand Oaks, over 20% is going to be supportable. The test will say what it is. I mean, the test will come back for moderate and low and very low, if that's what you want, to say what percentage is supportable. So I think maybe this box is just there to give you sort of a reality check, to say it's very likely this is going to end somewhere between 10% and 20%, and possibly on single-family homes even lower.
So we're talking about what percentage of affordable we would ask for?
Well, I mean, I think what we're, basically, it's a little bit of a question that you could all tell me what you want, but the financial evaluation is going to tell you what I think is supportable.
Right, right.
I'm just telling you, I don't think it's going to be more than 20%.
Well, if there's any rule of thumb, we produced about 1,000 units of housing over the last year, and about 114 of that has been affordable. So that's roughly 10%.
Right.
And I can't see how much more than that is going to make a project market feasible.
Right.
Especially here in our city where, you know, density is relatively restricted compared to other cities, and in fact, people have referred to anything beyond what we're doing now as excessive density. So, I mean, these projects have to work.
No, exactly.
We can't restrict them to the point where the developer just walks away. I mean, we already are trying to live down a 20-year reputation of a no-growth city.
Right.
All right? There's, you know, Thousand Oaks won't build, don't even bother showing up. But people are starting to come forward, and we do have some really great projects that are being built, and I just want to be careful that we don't get this thing so restrictive so that we fall backwards again and become the, you know, the city that no one wants to build in.
And believe me, I don't want you two either, because I don't want a failure as a program. I think, one thing to keep in mind, and it was mentioned a few times, just how dense this population, this presentation is and how much information there is in it. That's why we do this presentation upfront, is to give you a background and a foundation so that then when we come back with the financial evaluation, you will have gotten some context. And so I think the percentage requirement is something that's going to come up in the financial evaluation. I'm going to recommend, am I too far away again? Sorry. I'm just, I'm always so loud that I'm very conscious of it. I'm going to recommend percentages, and then you're either going to say, "Great, Kathy, that's right," or "Too bad, we don't care what you said, and we're going to do what we want." Which you're perfectly able to do. You're the policymakers.
For my money, to make something market feasible and for us to be a community that, you know, builder will come to, I'd lean more towards the 10% number.
Very good. Mr. Jones had a question.
Well, you know, I'm sitting here and trying to digest all of this. We recently approved two large projects, and they're all apartments. Couldn't persuade them to build any for-sale units, but first they had to get through the general plan amendment stage because they didn't have the proper general plan designation. And we told them, when we let them through that, that we didn't like the current looks of the project, and we strongly suggested that they come back with more affordable units, and in one case that they lowered the height of a building.
Right.
I mean, you can accomplish a lot by bargaining, is what I'm trying to say. And I think we did pretty well with those two projects. We got quite a bit affordable. I don't know the exact ratio.
Right.
And they did lower one building.
Right. And they were both density bonus projects.
They were what?
They were both density bonus projects. They both used state density bonuses as a means of getting the development done. And no, and the fact that, I know the two projects, and so the fact that you were able to bargain with them for these projects and get something more compatible with Thousand Oaks was great. And I think that's one of the objectives you want to have when you're doing an affordable housing requirement, is if you make it too onerous, people are going to come in and they're just going to use the state, you know, the state has given a bunch of new statutes or relatively new statutes that take a lot of power out of your hand.
So the main difference of having an inclusionary ordinance and not having it is, they know upfront if you have an exclusionary ordinance.
Right.
They don't know, in the situation that I described, or the two situations, because it was so fluid that I think we gave them the strong impression, you know, if they wanted to go through the next stage successfully, that was what we wanted to see.
Right.
And I, I don't know. Is it really that desirable to have an inclusionary, exclusionary ordinance?
Well, I think that's up to you all.
I would say, Ed, and just, the developers I've talked to, they want some expectation or knowledge of what our expectations are. Doesn't have to be set in stone, but they like knowing going in what our thoughts are as far as an inclusionary, what type of mix of market rate, moderate and low and all that. It helps them figure out their prerogatives.
And the bargaining that Ed was referring to, and we did an excellent job of that, was done through developer agreements. But once the general plan update is presumably passed sometime next year, developer agreements will no longer be available to us. We will be bound by the general plan.
We ought to just stay in limbo.
Well, we won't be in limbo anymore. In fact, many projects will get as far as a planning commission, won't even get to us. So I think the more structure we put in, the better.
Ms. Bill de Le Penya.
And for Kathy, one of the projects was actually without a state density bonus.
Oh, then I was mistaken on which project I was thinking it was.
Thank you.
Very good. Can you flashback up that neat little chart?
What do I do to make that happen? It just, oh, okay. That's not me. I'm not controlling that. Okay, covenant period. How long do you want on ownership? This is ownership, not rental.
What's, where are we now?
And forever's not a great idea.
The, I think, for the most, and I'm relying on your chart, most of the ones do come in the 45-year range, which seems to be the state-of-the-art, so to speak, in what people have been asking for. So I'd be happy to stay in that range, because in the back of my mind, I'm always worried about HCD identifying some of the things we do maybe as a deterrent to development, which could put our general plan and our housing element at risk.
I agree, and that's why I always take a conservative approach when I do these analyses, because I have actually worked in communities where HCD has come and made us prove up that we weren't creating a constraint to housing. I was the consultant. I haven't, I've only worked for Kaiser Marsden, it's the only job I've ever had, but, but cities that I've worked in, I've had to write analyses to show it wasn't a constraint.
Well, there seems to be some safety in numbers there. If that's the, if that's sort of the mean of what people are going for, then I think that might be something we want to stay with.
Okay.
A 45-year duration, is that what you're talking about, Bob?
Yeah, for sale, 45-year duration.
Ah, for sale, okay.
And then it was 55, I think, for rental was sort of the mean of what other cities have been going for. That seems to be, like I say, safety in numbers. It's sort of that this is the going, the going rate, so to speak, for cities in California that our consultant has promised.
Okay, that sounds about right.
I'm open to any other suggestions, but it just seems, that seems to be the going rate, so to speak.
That's best practice.
It's definitely in the range.
Okay.
Okay, so let's just go through the other options and just discuss now, because onsite production was obviously the option you're going to do as your primary preferred, but now looking at options that you may wish to offer. For example, do you want to consider in, on larger sites, the ability to create a separate parcel and do a 100% affordable apartment project?
That's the off-site production, right?
That's, it's an onsite. So if you had a big site, you'd just create it into two parcels. But instead of like, it'd be an ownership project on the market rate, and then it would be affordable on the, to fulfill the inclusionary, would be apartments.
That's kind of what we did with the Pinecrest School when we had the initial proposal of a portion was just market rate, and then a separate one was seniors.
That would be an acceptable alternative, don't you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Then, let's go on to off-site. Do you want to consider off-site as an option?
There's not that much land available.
In my, I don't think we have a whole lot of options in town to begin with. That would be a distant second or third, in my opinion.
Okay, good. Okay, acquisition rehab. And remember with acquisition rehab, no matter how appealing it sounds, it's very hard to get rena credit for.
That sounds too complicated.
Okay. Anybody else?
Just a quick question, a quick question on that, I think, from me. Yeah, rehab of an existing rental or residential would be very hard, but if we rehab, say, a warehouse or a, an office, would that, would that then qualify for rena?
Yeah, because then that's a reuse, so that's, it wasn't a residential use, so it'd count as new units. The issue with acquisition rehab of existing apartments is those units already exist in your community, but if it's something that's not put to a residential use and you did some sort of adaptive reuse, that would not.
I just don't think there's a lot of, I can't think of many places in town, can anybody else, but that would even be available for that.
I don't think that'd be a good alternative. I don't think the land dedication would be either.
Okay. Okay, so let's move on. Let's do apartments. And I'll stick near the microphone, I promise. So they're the same questions. So I think we kind of dealt with the onsite production because there was a little bit of confusion about the charts. I guess the one thing that I heard would be you would definitely like to look at very-low and low and presumably not moderate for apartments. You can look at moderate, but I'm sort of thinking you focus ownership on moderate and the apartments on very-low and low. But again...
I would agree with that. Moderate on for sale, very-low and low on rental.
Anybody else? Going once? Twice? Okay. Offsite production? Where did we land on ownership? Did we land on no?
No, we were good with the offsite production, but not with the acquisition rehab or the land dedication.
Okay, so would you be okay on apartments with offsite production, or do you want it to be required within the apartment development itself? What are the problems?
For me, it, for those units, to have them embedded within the buildings is the most preferred way.
Right.
As you, as the mayor said, there really isn't any, there's not much land available anymore. We're, we've pretty much run out.
Very true.
So offsite is not making much sense to me.
It's a distant second.
Oh, that's what you said, that's right.
As the mayor said. Because...
You're right, Claudia, there's not that much land available. I think I says a distant third. We skipped right past second.
Oh, was it third?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
It's an unlikely alternative.
Yeah.
Okay, so I think we have the same issue with acquisition rehab and land dedication. So now, let's talk about in-Lufi. So on in-Lufi for apartments, I think, I mean, my professional opinion is, the more production of apartments you can get, as opposed to getting it in-Lufi, the better off you are, because generally, you're going to take your in-Lufis and assist apartment development. So I think you need to offer an in-Lufi option, but I would suggest you make it hard to use.
I would agree with that.
Yeah. You see, in-Lufi charged against just the affordable units that we wouldn't get or all the market rate units.
Okay, so what it is, is it ends up being an amount, like say you had a 100-unit project and a 10% requirement.
Okay.
Right? So you have 10 units required.
Right.
Okay, so you can either take 10 units times the affordability gap, whatever that is, per unit, and that's the total fee. You can do the same thing then with the market rate, if you charge it to all the market rate, it's still that total fee, it's just divided by all the units. You'll see in my analysis, I'll show it to you in three different ways.
We can figure that out later.
Yeah, and it ends up being exactly the same dollar amount, just people understand it differently, so I like to show it, three different ways to say, "Look, the in-Lufi is $200,000. It's $20,000 per market rate unit, or $200,000 per affordable unit, or whatever it is per square foot of building area."
Okay.
It'll be the same. It's the same total, no matter how you do it.
But I think you're right, we want to get the units built.
Yeah.
Is it, are you asking for a minimum number or a threshold number for in-Lufi?
Yes. Well, I think we're also asking a threshold, thank you for asking that, the threshold number you'd want to have for rental to be subject to the requirement.
In other words, for a small, a small development, say, 20 units.
Right.
There would be an expectation of an in-Lufi rather than an inclusionary housing.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Can I ask a question? What do most jurisdictions do when they accumulate a lot of in-Lufis? Do they go out and buy land and build some apartments or something?
Yeah. And it's already given to a mission-driven developer to build apartments. But, and just because you want a feasible program again, because you don't want to hit small projects so hard they can't get built.
So then you keep that in a fund until you feel you have enough to do a project or work with a developer?
Yes.
Maybe if I can add, Councilmember Mayor Pertham Jones, one opportunity is also rehabbing some existing units as well, because we have a number, you know, 1,200 or so units. You might remember when we were together at the Fiora Gardens, that was a rehab we did on that facility and that allowed it to sort of...
Do we have much money right now in that category, Drew?
Not much. I'm looking at Jamie, she'll probably have a rough number on the top of her head.
Okay. Plus, you can use it for homeless facilities, correct?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have a fund currently set up for our in-linkage fee, and it's zero, because we set the rate at zero, so we don't have any money in it.
But in terms of other funds that are like housing successor agency funds?
So housing successor is what we have used for the Hillcrest purchase, we used $1.2 million, and then we used $1.8 million for Quality Inn and Suites, our Home Key project.
For what?
For our project, Home Key, at Quality Inn and Suites. And that's about how much funding we had in our housing successor funds. And then we do have a housing trust fund as well that has about $3 million in it, so...
Well, it sounds like we've put it to good use.
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
I think in, just in terms of the in-Lufi, I like what you had said earlier about a sliding scale depending on the amount of units being proposed and that sort of thing. How do we put that into your calculations?
Oh, I'll do it, because I have a, I have a formula that I use to create a sliding scale. So I'll just create a sliding scale and I'll show it to you.
So from, say, two units to 20 units?
Right.
There'd be a difference?
Yes.
Okay.
That'll be part of the analysis.
I think that's the way I would like to see this go, with some sort of recommendation to be able to adjust those fees, because as, as I think we all agree, that we don't want to be so restrictive that we get nothing built. As you pointed out, 50 times zero, still zero.
Yep.
So, very good.
Okay, no, that makes sense, and that's, this is all helpful input.
But, but her recommendation was to really go with a onsite production rather than the in-Lufi. So if we have a minimum, say, five-unit project or something, well, I don't know what that minimum would be, but...
Right. So, and I'll show you, I mean, a lot of these questions are just premature, too, they're just to whet your appetite, and we'll be back, and that's what I was going to talk about on this next slide, we'll be back with results, and then we can discuss how you feel about the results and how you want to proceed with particularly project threshold, sliding scale... sliding scale fees, when can fees be paid, when can they not? We'll be back to talk about that again.
I know, I noticed on your, on your document here that the threshold is kind of all over the board. That's, of all, of all the variables that people have picked, that's sort of all over the place.
Yes.
So I, I personally would need a little more guidance, I think, on what would be appropriate.
And you know, it'll also play into what the suggested requirement is, because when you start getting into fractions, you want to, you want to start thinking about how those thresholds work, so that you don't have a very small project, for example, like a 10-unit project ending up with a two-unit requirement. So you just want to be careful about that. So, now we'll be back, as I say here. So I'm just going to run through this last slide, because it's late, and I'm sure you all heard plenty of me for one night. And I'll be back two more times. So the next steps are, we're gonna, we're gonna finish up the financial evaluation, and we're gonna test, we're gonna include the, the feedback that we've received tonight in, in that analysis to make sure that we're discussing the topics that are of interest and importance to you. And then we'll be back to discuss the results of that analysis. And Ian, when are we back?
Probably the early part of 2023, possibly late January, early February.
So we'll be back, then. And then after we talk to you then, you'll give us guidance on what, what policy recommendations that you want to accept and which ones you don't, or which ones you want to tweak, or, or how you want to deal with it. And then I'll come back and I'll prepare, based on those recommendations, a policy memo that then just shows you examples of how it'd work and, and how it'd be structured. And, and then if you approve that, then you'll go forward to the draft ordinance.
Very good. And probably for Ian or Mr. Holt or Mr. Parker, this is all going to be wrapped in then to our, our land use element of our general plan type, so we'd be all ready to go for our general plan next spring.
This is actually one of the programs in the housing element that council adopted, so this will be satisfying one of those requirements that we'll eventually report out to HCD.
Very good, thank you.
And thank you for paying attention. I know it was a lot.
Are you sure we did?
I am, I watched.
Well, thank you very much. Any other questions from our colleagues? Very good. Thank you all for the very good overview of, obviously, a very complex subject, and look forward to our next, next discussion. Okay, Mr. City Manager, do you have anything for us?
Yes, and I'm sure what will come is welcome news after a long evening. This is our last meeting until the 6th of December. We, our meeting scheduled for the 15th has been canceled. We will have a number of folks heading to the National League of Cities Conference during that timeframe. On the 6th, we anticipate being back before you with a recommendation on our homeless navigation center, and are working on a number of, of other items, including an amendment to our single-use disposables ordinance that will, to bring into compliance with some additional components of state law, and reports from our investment review committee and our community funding review committee, community sports grant awards. That's on the 6th of December, and that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Donan.
Thank you, Mayor Engler. We do have one closed session item on conference with legal counsel on existing litigation. GI Industries Doing Businesses' Waste Management versus City of Thousand Oaks, both the trial court and appellate court cases pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9A.
Thank you very much, and thank you all for tuning in and listening to our discussions tonight. It's always good to have the, the participation and attention of our audience. Thank you so much. We're adjourned.